...under God indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
They had the flag on.
Yes, I noticed.
I'm asking turning to the left here. You gotta turn further to the left.
I complained to the city manager.
Oh, good. So you're the one who reported it, huh? Item two on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone wishing to speak for the commission on items not listed on the agenda. So here's your opportunity, seeing no one. We will go to the action recap for the February 28, 2008 minutes. Are there comments? I actually had some. If no one else did, I hope that I took the time to make some notes. Did anyone else have some comments on the minutes?
No.
My comments were on page three of three under item review of Big Four traffic study. And there are several summary points under Commissioner comments. And I'd like to amend those to clarify at least what my point was with regard to the Nelson Nygaard study. I think there was different input that we received, some positives, some not, about the purpose and usefulness of the Nelson Nygaard study. But for some specific edits, if I can read my handwriting here. My point under the third bullet, it reads right now, it would have been useful if Nelson Nygaard had looked at specific road changes for the different locations. And I was well aware that that wasn't part of their scope at the time, as I believe it's...
Actually, it was.
I thought the scope was to do that in the future, but the initial effort was not to look at specific roadways, intersections?
No, they were supposed to do that now. At least, that was staff's impression.
Okay. Well, part of the point that I was making is that I thought it would be useful for Nelson Nygaard to be involved in looking at the specific options that we see for each of those intersection changes. If you recall that point that I tried to drum in several times, I had not completely bought into all of the intersection widening and lane, vehicle lane solutions. And before I committed to some of them, I wanted to see the options, what the ramifications were with regard to pedestrian and bike circulation in particular. I think one of my biggest concerns was the off-ramp improvements to northbound 880 at Powell, and just how widening that might compromise pedestrian crossing there. There were a couple other locations that I said, well, there are different options for looking at these, including, you know, their impact on pedestrian and bike use. So I wanted somehow to qualify in those comments, that I thought it would be useful for Nelson Nygaard to look at that.
I have a suggestion. We could word it a little more ambiguously. We could say...
I made a comment that said exactly what they've got in there.
That's not in there?
No, exactly what they do say. It would have been useful if they had looked at it specifically.
Good. So you want to keep that? That's great. My point is that I want in the record somehow to reflect that I had a point I wanted to make, which was before I bought into some of these specific intersection improvements, I wanted to see what they look like on the ground, what the options are for addressing them, and how they may or may not compromise pedestrian and bike use in those locations. And I don't see it captured here.
Well, we have one here that says the commissioners would like to review the designs of the street widenings as development projects move forward. That, I think that was the intent of that bullet point.
Maybe it also needs to say something more like, would like to review designs of potential street widenings to understand the implications and the design ramifications.
Okay. Potential street widenings.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
As to what was forward to...
So you're looking at the second to the last bullet?
Yeah.
Impacts on pedestrians, cyclists, and transit? Okay.
But I thought there was also, and I thought it was supported, the idea that Nelson Nygaard be involved in those specific design solution, that they review them as well.
Yes.
I agree with that.
I certainly didn't feel that way. I thought Nelson Nygaard had done a terrible job on that.
Well, when I get to my director's report, I'll tell you more about what's going on here.
Okay.
I think that the thought was that if Nelson Nygaard were to stay involved with this, they would continue to review any improvements that might be proposed in terms of pedestrian and bicycle amenities.
How about if we word the second to last bullet point, something like this. I would like to review the designs of the potential street widenings as development projects move forward to assess the impacts on pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit, with Nelson Nygaard involved in the designs.
I'd support that. I think that's the point I was trying to make in my comments.
Okay.
That's, I think that's fine.
Okay. With those changes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes from February 28, 2008?
I'll submerge.
With the changes? Okay. Then without objection, and noting Angela's absence. Next item on the agenda is director's report. Charlie?
Okay. First with regard to the city council. The city council has met twice since your last meeting. They met on March 4th and March 18th. On March 4th, they had a study session on affordable housing production programs and policies. The redevelopment agency approved the creation of an interview panel for selection of a consultant for the strategic plan for the development of the cultural arts center here behind Old Town Hall. The agency also approved plans and specifications for two projects, the Doyle Hollis Park and also the cleanup of the triangle parcel that the city recently acquired from the railroad at Sherwin Avenue and Hallock Street, and authorized staff to advertise both of those projects for bids. So both those projects will get going pretty soon. And the council authorized staff to submit an application for infrastructure grant funds from the Transit Oriented Development Program of the State Housing and Community Development Department for the Marketplace project. The March 18th council meeting was almost entirely devoted to discussion of the major development project traffic study review, which was the presentation and discussion that you had at your February 28 meeting and that you were just discussing concerning the action recap. They saw the same PowerPoint presentation that you saw in February with a couple of additions. The additions included, of course, your comments. In addition, we had another recommendation that frankly hadn't occurred to us at the time we presented the study to you, or we would have mentioned it to you as well. And that is with regard to the comprehensive streetscape study that we're recommending, streetscape design that we're recommending in the area of Powell and Christie, which would address all of these widenings and the freeway ramp and Christie and Powell Street. We recommended that WRT be retained to conduct that streetscape design sort of as an adjunct to the Shellmount street guidelines that they did for us last year. Since it's right next to it, they could combine the two into one comprehensive streetscape design for most of the north Hollis, I mean, north Bayfront area between the railroad and the freeway. And the council did indicate that they agreed with that approach. And so we are now in discussions with WRT as to how to move that forward. I would note that our recommendation to the council was that WRT should take the lead as urban designers, and that Farron Pierce, Kimley Horn, and Nelson Nygaard, and probably also the UC Berkeley Traffic Safety Center that did a study for us a little while ago on pedestrian safety in the area should all be involved in that study under the guidance of WRT. So we're, as I say, we're in initial discussions with WRT about how to make that all happen. A couple of other things that the council did on March 18th, they approved a noise waiver for a concrete pour at the Adeline Place project. And they approved a creation of a committee to guide the design of another pedestrian-bike bridge, similar to the one that you're about to see a presentation on. This one will be over the freeway at 65th Street. So they created that committee so that project can start moving forward. With regard to the general plan update, as you all know, we had a joint meeting of the planning commission and city council last Saturday, and most of you were there. I think that meeting went very well. We got through all the material and all the issues, and the general plan steering committee got the direction they were looking for to move forward with finalizing the general plan, with a few revisions from the council and commission. And then at the general plan update steering committee meeting this past Tuesday, the committee kind of breathed a big sigh of relief and had a little bit of a debriefing on Saturday's meeting. And then forging ahead, they decided to focus the April steering committee meeting on urban design, doing some brainstorming about what would be covered by the urban design element and the upcoming design guidelines, while meanwhile, the rest of the general plan, the other elements, and the zoning ordinance, and the guidelines, and the environmental impact report will all be moving forward in preparation. Finally, I'd just like to tell you about a few other meetings that are going on. There was a community meeting on Wednesday, March 5th about the Baker Metal Project. That was to be on your agenda tonight for a study session, but it's been continued because they have some more work to do on that. There was a community meeting about the South Bayfront Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge on Saturday, March 8th. There was also a community meeting about the housing element on Saturday, March 15th. And there will be a community meeting about the triangle traffic calming measures. That is coming up on Monday, April 7th. It will be at 7:30 PM at the Senior Center on Salem Street. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Charlie? I just want to say that staff and Patty and Gail, as chair and vice chair of the steering committee, did an excellent job last Saturday. I was really impressed. I thought there was no way we were going to get through that meeting in one day. And, you know, it was an excellent job.
Thank you.
So I very much appreciate it. Next item on the agenda are study session items. And before we go to the first item, as Charlie mentioned, I want to let everyone attending know that the 65th Street loss and Ocean Avenue Townhouse study session item has been postponed to a meeting date uncertain, in case you're here for that. You don't need to continue to stay. The first item on the agenda is the South Bayfront Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge Concepts. And I think, Diana, that's your project. So what we'll do is we'll have a brief presentation from the staff, and then we will hear from the consultant and with questions from the commission, and then anyone who wants to provide input to the commission. This is not a public hearing item, but we will still hear from you.
Okay.
And I think what we're doing is probably a three-minute limit, so if you do have public comments, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes.
The South Bayfront Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge will span the main railroad tracks at Temescal Creek to connect Bay Street Center on the west side to Future Horton Landing Park on the east, on the Future Greenway behind Novartis and near Horton Street. Based on input from the bridge committee, the planning commission, and participants at the first public meeting, the city council has selected the bridge and ramp alignments. So now, the decision questions are: bridge type, truss, basket handle arch, butterfly arch, single arch, or cable stay, and whether or not to replace the bridge between the two Bay Street garages, and whether to have an elevator on the east side, and the design of Horton Landing Park. These questions were addressed at a public workshop that was held on March 8th and a bridge committee meeting that was held on March 24th. At the workshop, we saw strong support for the cable stay and single arch bridge, you'll be seeing pictures of all these in just a minute, and some for the butterfly and basket handle arches, and almost none for the truss. Participants who commented on replacing the garage bridge generally wanted to do that, and those who commented on the elevators usually generally did not want an elevator. Several participants asked the park designers to widen the paths, integrate the park design with the bridge, and connect to the Greenway to the south, which definitely they will do, but it didn't show very well in the drawing. The bridge committee generally preferred the single arch. It was the first choice for most of the members and the second choice for one member after the cable stay. The committee agreed that the garage bridge should be replaced and thought an elevator should not be built now, but a place saved for it in case the city wants to do that in the future. And they didn't have a lot of time to discuss the park. So tonight, we have the consultants here. We have HNTB, and Rick is going to represent the design team and pretty much present the information you need for these decision points.
Great. Thanks, Diana.
Will we have the laptop, please? Thanks.
So my name is Rick Phillips. I'm the urban design director for HNTB Corporation in Oakland. And the consultant team is comprised of my firm, HNTB, and the structural engineering firm, Biggs, Cardosan Associates, in San Jose. And I think what I'm going to show you, since Diana gave a very excellent introduction, I was going to show a PowerPoint that we used at the workshop that Diana mentioned. But I think I'm just going to go right to something else and show you illustrations of the different bridge concepts, and also show you an animation that we've done for each one, which gives you an idea of the experience as I'm walking across the bridge and looking at it from different points of view. So I'm going to turn off the PowerPoint here and load a different file here before I do that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I have an architect and urban designer. There may be some questions that I may not be able to answer, and if I can't, I'll say so, and I'll get back to you with the answer that you need. Okay, from your position? We're going to show a board like this for each of the options. These boards are actually the ones we used at the public meeting that Diana mentioned. And I wanted to start by saying that there's something that all of these options have in common, apart from their location, and that's that there's a requirement to erect the bridge in a very short window of opportunity over the railroad corridor of literally a few hours or part of a day. And this requires any bridge type to be partially assembled on site, off to the side, on the east side, and then craned into place. And that's a major operation for all the bridge types. And in pairing these options, that created certain limitations, but we also found we were able to produce quite a range of different options that meet that criteria, and they're also all within the city's budget as well. This option right here is called a basket handle arch, and basically it's very similar in type to the Berkeley arch up on I-80. Basically, it's called a tied arch, and it can be lifted into place as a single unit and placed over the railroad tracks, and then you come in later and we pour the deck. And it produces a very graceful image from a distance, and one of the key views of this bridge will be from 40th Street as you pass over the railroad tracks south of IKEA. You can also see this site momentarily from I-80, coming from the north, actually. And you can also, of course, see it from the approaches to the Bay Bridge as well, from 24 and 880 as well. So there is a brief, you know, for us to produce a design that is very good-looking from a long way away, and also, of course, you're very good-looking, you have people who are walking across the bridge. And you see various views there of steps leading up to the bridge, views down the axis of Alone Way from the west. And you have an aerial view also on the left there from looking down over Bay Street, you know, to the bridge. Now, what I'll do is I'll go through quickly the other boards and give you a comparison of the different bridge types. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask them while we're going through this.
Are you going to explain how the Bay Street access works?
Yes.
On this...
For the pedestrians and bicyclists?
Yes.
Yes, they would come along, come along Alone Way, and at the point where Alone Way turns to go into the parking garage, you can cross at that point, if you're a bicyclist, and start up a ramp. And that ramp actually, you can see a portion of it in the, to the, in the lower part of the upper-left sort of aerial photograph there. It actually goes south behind the Madison Marquette project and then comes back.
Does the current bridge stay in place?
That is an option, actually. So there are two choices here. There's a choice of which type of main span to pick over the railroad tracks, and also the choice of whether or not we keep or replace the garage bridge. In either case, if we keep it or replace it, you come, if you're walking up the stairs from Alone Way, you walk up first to the level of the garage bridge, you cross the garage bridge, and you walk up another shorter flight of stairs to the bridge level, and then you cross over the railroad tracks.
This ramp goes under the bridge for the bicyclists?
It does. The bicycle ramp does not connect at all with the garage bridge. It's a totally independent system, but the walking path does.
Now, the bicycle bridge makes a loop, I mean, the bicycle ramp, which, on the west side?
Yes, it does.
Is there enough space there?
There is. Yes, there is.
Because none of the plans show that.
Rick, do you have the psych plan, the kind of generic psych plan?
With the alignments?
Do you have a more detailed map? This is really difficult.
Yeah, it sounds like people want to see an overview first before we look at the bridge design.
So the space between the railroad right of way and the shopping center where the garage is wide enough for a loop?
It isn't, yes, it is. It's wide enough for a loop, and it also still allows, you know, for the access to the back of the building as well. So this is the presentation that we showed to the public meeting, and I'll just go through it very quickly. I'll get right to the heart of it here. This is an aerial view looking down from the west, and this is looking in from Alone Way, from Shellmount Street. And the bridge, of course, takes off at an angle to the northeast as it crosses the railroad tracks to line up with the Future Green Belt out to Horton Street.
Is there any bicycle lanes projected, then, on the surface?
On the bridge?
No, on the surface street within the shopping center.
Diana, you want to answer that?
We haven't really designed the access. We've talked about it a little bit. We've talked about landscaping, and we just really haven't done that yet. I doubt there would be a bike lane, but we haven't really decided.
Most likely, there would be, most likely, there would be bike route signs and those stencils. They're called sheros, if you know what those are. Little double arrows and a bike stencil that indicates bikes and cars share the road.
Like on Doyle.
That's more of a bicycle boulevard sign. A shero is something you put on a street where it's not a bicycle boulevard, but it just alerts motorists that bicyclists are sharing the lane with the cars. And that would just be on the little stretch of Alone between Shellmount and the, on the bridge.
Okay.
Give you an idea of the project schedule, completion in the spring of 2010. This is looking down over the garage bridge into Alone Way to show you the west side of the site. And in all the options that you'll see, we have a stair that comes up from about where that, in front of that truck that you see there, coming up alongside the landscaped area, alongside the Temescal Creek. And that provides a very direct and very formal entrance to the bridge, you know, from Bay Street. This is a list of some of the different challenges and opportunities that we're facing with this project. It's a very constrained site, as you can tell. And one of the issues that we've had to deal with in looking at options is really how to build the bridge. And we're at that point now where we can say that we can do that. And that has both, in some ways, limited our options, but also sort of defined the whole theme of the project. And we were still able to produce a pretty wide range of options even under those conditions. The last three items there, environment history and public art, are really added more as opportunities that we'll be pursuing during design development, final design. And one of the ideas that has come out of the public meeting that we had, and also through the committee, is the possibility of extending, you know, the whole experience that begins on Alone Way and carrying that experience across the railroad tracks, you know, to the new park on the Horton Street side, and really, in a way, and sort of symbolically linking back across the other railroad tracks, you know, to recreate, you know, the sort of passage up and down the Alone, sorry, the Temescal Creek watershed. And it's an idea that we've just, you know, we talked about its possibility. We have yet to, of course, really begin to brainstorm what that might be. But we see a great opportunity there. So we came to the public hearing with, the public meeting with five concepts and a concept that's still evolving, of course, for the design of the park. And we're considering, you know, the possibility of elevators, as Diana already said. And as I said, at this point, all of the options that we're developing do fit within the city's budget. But of course, there's always the caveat about, you know, prices do change, so we have to be aware of that as we go into design development, final design.
What is the budget?
It's about $8 million total project cost. And that includes design as well as...
Are all of the alternatives similar in cost, or are there significant discrepancies?
There are, at this point, which is fairly conceptual, we identified some fairly minor variations. And basically, what happens is that the common, you know, feature of having to, you know, construct the bridge on the side and lift it into place with a crane is a very high common cost item for all options, and it kind of tends to average out the costs. There are some differences in the costs. For instance, the cable stay bridge would probably tend, you know, more toward the top of the range, and then the, some other options are a little less. But in my experience, when we have prices that are that close together at this point, you know, once we pick an option, we can use a variety of techniques that are, fall under the term, you know, sort of value engineering and detailed design to begin to resolve any issues that show up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
Are costs for replacement or retrofit of the existing parking structure bridge similar?
No, the parking bridge, replaced bridge would be more expensive. And I can't recall offhand the difference, but I know it's...
It's about three quarters of the money.
That's right. And it's, so we say these options are within budget. We're saying that any of the five bridge types with the garage bridge replaced, which is the more expensive option in that case, is still within budget.
At some point, are you going to show us how you get from Alone Way to the bridge?
Yes.
Which is what I'm quite interested in seeing.
Yes, we will get there. In fact, we'll even show you an animation of that in a moment.
Let me just make a comment on the, oh, here's the drawing you've all been waiting for.
Yeah, there we are.
Let me just make a comment on the budget. The budget does not include new elevators. So the city council recently decided that if elevators were to be included at either or both ends of the bridge, that the budget would be increased accordingly.
And Charlie, the percentage for public art, that would be based upon whatever the final cost is for the bridge?
Well, it's a public works project, not a development project. There will be public art, but it's not really a percent per art.
So, okay, so the city's not obliged to go with the 1%?
You're asking the wrong people. But I believe the redevelopment agency projects have a higher percent for art than 1%. It's something, but it's higher than 1%.
Okay, thanks.
There is, as Rick may have said, there is an elevator existing in the Bay Street garage that the ramp will connect to. So there will be an option to use an elevator at the west end.
Yeah, I know I can't use my laser pointer because you won't see it on your screen, but if you look at the...
I can use the cursor.
Yes, you can. I'll just talk through it. If you look to the, well, first of all, we'll start on Alone. You asked the question, how do you reach the bridge from Alone Way? If you're at the corner of Alone and Bay Street, or at the corner of Alone and Shellmount, for that matter, and you look down Alone, you'll see this sort of formal flight of stairs taking off up toward the bridge. And the way you'd get there is you'd... And the way you'd get there is you'd follow the sidewalk alongside the existing park along, along the Temescall Creek. And you'd follow that walkway across Bay Street and then up the stairs. And, and part of the.
That's this yellow mark on the.
That's correct. Yes, the yellow mark to the far left is the stair.
That's the stairs.
Right. And as we get into further design, we might extend that stair farther west and at a flatter angle to make it easier to climb. And that's, that's also an option as well we can, we can do. And one thing we'll also be doing as we get into design development is looking at, you know, detail design of the street cross section there. And we, we maybe, maybe moving the curb a little farther to the north to have more width for the sidewalk and the stair. And that's something that we're looking at in, in detail, what that might mean in terms of, of, of traffic. But, but right now, our traffic planners are telling us that's, that's, you know, very acceptable to look at that. So that's something we're currently involved with right now.
What's the advantage of taking out the, the bridge? Just aesthetics, or does it have some functional value?
Taking out the garage bridge?
Yeah.
Now, there, there are two possible advantages. And, and I must say that keeping the bridge is also acceptable, by the way.
Says what?
Keeping the garage bridge would also be acceptable. But there are two advantages to, to replacing it. One of them is, is, is safety. If we replace it, we can actually have the, the, the bridge deck a little wider, perhaps, where you, where you cross. And then you can see in that, in, in, the, the red area is shown as a kind of a bulb out as it, you know, meets the, the stairs coming up. This provides you better sightlines for people crossing the, the bridge, you know, against traffic, you know, coming from, from the garage. Although the, although the traffic counts are very low, actually. Um, the other advantage would of course be aesthetics. If you don't have that bridge in your line of sight, you, you can see the structure of, of the main span, you know, you know, more clearly. But as we pointed out, you know, to the committee when they were making their choice, even that's a matter of personal opinion. I mean, the, uh, we, we, we really stressed that we were bringing no straw men before this committee, that any, any of the five options in combination with either version of keeping the garage bridge or letting it go and replacing it, you know, you know, could all be acceptable. And it's really a matter of, of personal opinion when it comes to aesthetics.
So what is the level of use of that bridge between the garages?
I, I can't recall offhand the exact numbers, but it's, it's, it's very modest, and it certainly is.
There's about one car per hour.
So if you took, if you got rid of the bridge, how would they get from the, connect the two garages?
Well, we're not proposing to get rid of the bridge. We're proposing to replace the, the garage bridge. Uh, it would still be functional as a garage bridge, as well as a pedestrian crossing to, to, to the.
What do you mean by replacing it?
Literally removing the bridge that's there now and putting a new bridge in its place.
Why, why, why would you do that? Put it at a different location?
For aesthetic reasons.
Well, there's also a, a third reason, too, I might add, that it, it does help us with the, the, the building process. If we can remove the, the garage bridge, it's easier to get access in, in from Alone Way, you know, for cranes that are required to help lift the bridge into place, the main span. Now, we can work out a way to not have to do that by using a different kind of crane on the east side. But it's, it's, it is to our advantage in terms of construction cost to be able to remove the garage bridge, come in on Alone Way with, with, with the cranes, build the main span, then back out and replace the garage bridge.
Is it, go ahead. Is the auto bridge something that was required?
Essentially, that's.
If it gets so little use, does it need to exist at all?
I asked the same question at the workshop. I was told that it's necessary for emergency egress, if nothing else, that for fire safety purposes, they have to have that garage there to connect the two upper floors of the garage.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it does make sense to get rid of it and not do the replacement cost. But I think that issue has been looked at, and it's needed to address the fire safety circulation. Is that, and I think Ignacio was the one who answered that question, and he's shaking his head yes there in the back of the room.
Yes.
All right, fine. I'll defer.
Unless you have other information, Charlie, where we can get rid of the bridge altogether.
Well, no, I mean, I was going to say, I don't believe it's a code requirement. I don't think the city is requiring it, but it does make the operation of the garage much more efficient.
So you don't think it's a fire problem?
I, not sure.
Ignacio, do you want to address that?
I think it, it seems at full capacity, and when the second phase is done, there's going to be a lot more use on that bridge.
Yes, the garage bridge on the north only has one exit for the retail, so it needs sort of a relief, because that's the only connection between the two on the second level. There's a different exit for the residential, but for the retail, that's the only other exit. So we, they need that for the garage to operate properly.
Is it a one-way road? Is it one-way, or is?
Uh, the garage bridge is two-way, but there's a mark, I mean, there's a red light in either way when someone's crossing, when there's a car crossing.
Well, it's, it's one lane, so it's only one way at a time, but it's reversible.
And he said it's necessary for what reason?
To provide an alternative egress out of the garage, the northern garage. There's only one exit for the commercial parking in the garage right now. So that bridge provides the alternative exit out of the parking structure.
And I'm sorry, the pedestrian experience will say across the existing bridge is not very becoming. Is that, I've never been on the bridge, so I wouldn't know. Or is there even pedestrian?
It's not a pedestrian bridge.
Well, I think, I think there's a couple of things. Either, you could do it, as Rick said, either with or without the existing bridge. In both cases, there will be a crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk in the middle of the bridge, across the bridge, perpendicular to the bridge. The advantage of replacing it with a new bridge, there's a couple, and I think Rick said there was a third, but, well, the third one is that you get rid of the bridge for a while, so it makes construction easier. Um, in addition to that, aesthetically, a new bridge wouldn't have the truss design that the existing bridge has, so it wouldn't block the view of the, of the new bridge over the railroad. And also, a new bridge could be widened in the middle to provide a little more space for the pedestrians to get across than the existing bridge has.
So to continue answering the question about how you, how you reach the bridge, if you're a bicyclist, you, of course, don't take the stairs. You, you come in on Alone Way, and then underneath, just past where, you pass under the garage bridge, and Alone Way, you know, turns into the garage, there would be an entrance there to the ramp. And that's, that's the blue line that you're seeing that's going down toward the bottom, bottom of, of the frame. You go down and then double back and come back up again. And when you come back up again, you're meeting the, the main span at the west abutment. And from that point on, then pedestrians and bicyclists share the main span. Now, there's one feature that I'll, I'll try to describe, and it's going to be, be hard to point it out. If you start down the, the bicycle bridge, you very quickly come to a point where you can, where we have a, a connection into the second level of, of the garage, of the, of Madison Marquette's development. That enables people to come down, see who are in wheelchairs, and enter the garage at that point, and then use the elevators in the Madison Marquette development. Did you, is my PowerPoint? Yeah, moving it, there we go, yeah. So if you look closely, you'll see a, a thin yellow line running horizontally there across the garage, and that's indicating a, a path that we, that we've established from that ramp over to the elevators in the Madison Marquette building there. And the first run of the bicycle ramp down to that point is, is very shallow. It's, it's less than 5%. And then beyond that point, it's a little steeper, you know, to get down, down to ground. So it's, it's, it's a very acceptable ADA path, you know, for that purpose. Now, I should point out, though, that the access to those elevators, of course, is depending, you know, on, 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 on the developer in this case. So that wouldn't necessarily provide elevator access, you know, at, at all times of the day and night.
And didn't you have a, you had a workshop at Novartis as well, where concern was expressed about the stairway being a well tucked back against the railroad tracks?
Yes.
And the idea, in response to the concerns expressed during that first workshop, was to connect on the second level to the existing bridge, drop the stairway down, so it became this grand, very visible, very inviting opening, rather than tucked back against the railroad tracks.
That is correct, yes.
So that's, that's how they've responded to that design concern.
So it is a very, it's a very open design, and it has, you know, excellent sightlines from, from the street and from adjoining buildings, you know, for security also. On the east side, you're seeing at the upper, the upper right there, a, a similar, you know, ramp link to get back down again. What that ramp does is it comes down to the point where you see the switchback. And then, what we've been looking at since the workshop, actually, and we'll get into that a little bit later, is a, is beginning to, a, a design, some of the work, so it'll go into the park. And one of our ideas is to actually come up a grade in the park to the point where you meet that switchback, and then, then come back down again in, in the park. And that very much, of course, shortens that, you know, the, the actual structural ramp, and that actually reduces its visual impact as well, and also gives, you know, some great visual interest, you know, to the park itself.
Can I just go back to that first leg of the bike?
Yes.
On the west side?
By all means, yes.
That is the ADA route of travel? Was it looked at to continue the, the bridge to get access to the, to get ADA access by means of the, the bridge that connects the two garages, rather than having someone that needs the ADA access to have to go back behind the building, back by the railroad there?
Uh, no, we didn't do that. Now, the, the, the path, you know, when, when the elevators are, are in operation, are available, the ADA path is fairly short. I mean, you, you come down a certain distance, you know, behind the garage, where it's still fairly open, by the way, also at that point. You know, it's basically just the decks and columns there. And then you can, then you can cross, you know, on that path to the elevators. And the, you know, it's, it's, it's an ADA, you know, the ramp's ADA all the way to the bottom, of course, also. You know, so it, it can be used, you know, also when, when the elevator's not available. But no, we have not looked at, at, uh, we, we did it very early on in, in our initial studies, looked at ramps, actually, in Alone Way as a possibility. And it really wasn't possible to fit them into, into the street, you know, in, in, in that space.
One thing we wanted to do was get people into the garage near the elevators, rather than taking them into the north part of the garage where they have to go past so many parking spaces.
Yeah.
I think another issue is that the, the height of the bridge over the railroad, because it has to be at a certain height to clear the tracks, is quite a bit higher than the bridge between the garages. So you see a yellow staircase there, but there's, it's too steep to put a ramp there.
So the elevator access on the west side of the bridge is the green line shown in this figure connecting to the blue ramp?
That is correct, yes.
See that art?
It's right there.
Now, in the case of.
So once you get to the elevator, then you can get out to the garage somehow?
Yep. Cross the garage, cross the garage along the green route and connect directly to the blue ramp.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be at that, that elevation.
Mm-hmm. Now, on the east side, if we did have an elevator, it would likely be right at the east abutment of the bridge, where, you know, in, in our planning for the bridge, we're allowing an area, you know, for that, if it's ever done. And that would be a, that would be a new elevator in that case.
And you have some location for that when we get to the park layout?
We do, indeed, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's just, as we go into more design development, we'll keep, we'll keep assessing that and keep making sure that that's staying in, in the plans as a possibility. So when we finish, if we haven't, if we don't have an elevator, an elevator could be added at some later date, you know, fairly easily. The other yellow paths there are just the beginnings of, of showing, you know, paths in, in the park that'll take you out to, to Horton Way, and also coming down on, on the Greenway as well. And of course, ultimately going south into the, into the property that's, that's now the Sherwin-Williams site as well. So this is a, uh, just the beginning of that, you know, showing how that might begin, you know, begin to appear. We'll show more, more developed drawings a little later of the park. This was the, looking at the, the earlier option that you mentioned of the stair tucked behind the bridge, just if you actually modeled that, and that's what it looked like. Very similar to earlier proposals for the bridge, of course, that you're already familiar with. Uh, this is looking at, of course, the, the stair, and, and these are, of course, the two, the two options here. On, on the left, you have, you know, the new garage bridge with the stair leading up, and on the right, you have the stair leading to the, to the existing garage bridge. You can see that it does, you know, it does actually stand in, in front of your view of, of the main span in, in, in the background.
Right.
But you see, in both cases, though, you have excellent sightlines, you know, for, for security. This is, this is one of the five options, a truss, very straightforward design. It would be, you know, reminiscent of railway structures, perhaps historically, and we thought that was one, one, something that needed to, you know, to be, to be looked at. As, as Diana said earlier, this is an option that, that didn't find much favor with, you know, with the community at, at, at the public meeting. But there, you can see that, again, the features, this, this is with the, the, the new garage bridge shown, and you see the two flights of stairs, and you see the, the part of the bicycle ramp also tucking behind the building on, on the lower right there. You know, idea of the proportions? And different views, the, the top view would be what you would see from, from, from Forty Street, looking, looking north. The lower left would be the view looking in from Horton. And then, of course, lower right is looking in from about the intersection of Alone and Bay Street with the, with the formal stairway. The basket handle arch, of course, is very similar to the, to the, the Berkeley arch over I-80. Again, a little more, probably, probably a little, little more graceful design in this case. Again, very similar proportions to the truss, and various views, you're looking down to the bridge from the east. Again, the Forty Street view, and then the view from, from along Alone Way. This is shown in this case with the replacement garage bridge. This is actually a variation of the basket handle, where you simply incline the arches outward instead of, instead of inward. And the advantage is that it, it does create a, more of a feeling of openness when you're actually walking along the bridge.
Does this show the stairway going up to the bridge, the, the auto bridge, and then across it?
Correct, yes.
People are expected to walk across the traffic lanes?
That's correct, yes.
On all the alternatives?
All the alternatives.
That's the solution now.
I thought, I thought the original was to go under the bridge.
No, this is for the bikes.
No, but all the stairways.
The original design had a separate tower with a separate stairway next to the railroad tracks that set, was separate from the existing auto bridge. And the, the direction was to connect it to the auto bridge.
And walk across the bridge?
Walk across the bridge.
My goodness.
And down the stairway. So that's, all the alternatives now have this.
Oh, I thought it went under the, that auto bridge. I'm sorry, I see.
Yes, the, the bicyclists still do. They, they, yeah.
Actually.
Is there going to be a signal there with, uh, with pedestrians?
Well, we've got one bridge an hour, I mean, one, one vehicle an hour.
That's actually one vehicle per minute.
Per minute.
I misspoke.
Yeah, one vehicle an hour probably wouldn't justify having a bridge.
Well, that's what I was wondering. There's about 60 vehicles per hour.
60 vehicles per hour.
Our traffic consultant said is not very much, and pedestrians shouldn't have any trouble crossing it. And the, the interesting thing is, a stair down to the ground would result into pedestrians crossing a lot more traffic than if they crossed at that bridge.
Was a study done to continue flat across above the bridge and have the stairway on the farce, on the west side of it?
Yeah, we did look at, at some early options. Now, the problem is you have to actually go up a little higher than the main span of the bridge. And that added, of course, then cost, but also added length and height to the stairs and ramps. And that is, we certainly looked at that, though. We, in that option, we had to literally go across Bay Street into the block between Bay and, and Shellmount, if we could have ramps in Alone Way. And then, and on the back of the building here, they went too far south, and they began to interfere with, with emergency stairs and behind the building and other things.
Well, this is a one-way bridge that's reversible with lights. That's the way it operates at present time?
That's correct, yeah.
Could it conceivably be signaled then, so it's red in both directions? Would it control pedestrian?
It could be, yes, it could be, certainly. And we said before, we do feel that the, you can see it in this view very clearly, And we said before, we do feel that the, you can see it in this view very clearly, that the replacement bridge does give the opportunity of a landing out of traffic, which does increase safety on that crossing.
And I would hope the cars are not speeding across that thing anyway, so.
It's only one lane, in theory.
There's more views of the butterfly truss. You get the impression that it has a more kind of open feel as you walk across it. That's really the only difference between that option and the basket handle arch. This is a option where you have a single arch and it crosses diagonally across the deck. And then the deck then does a very shallow S curve, which is how it clears the cables that are hanging down to support it. And this option, as an urban designer, this is an option I actually like myself, because it actually deals with the skew of the bridge. It actually creates a kind of a flow across the corridor that actually kind of resolves that diagonal skew across the railroad tracks. So this is one I actually like for that reason.
This is your favorite one?
This is a community favorite.
I mean, yours personally.
Actually, it is actually my favorite one, to be quite honest.
Could this be built in one day? I mean, it doesn't look like it...
No, none of them can be built in one day. What can happen, though, is that they can be lifted into place over the railroad tracks in one day. And that's the key. And then there's certain operations that go on then after, once you have the bridge placed.
Once the arch is up, they do this.
Well, what you can't do in this case is go out into the railroad tracks and erect false work or scaffolding or anything like that. We have to be able to pluck and place basically in one operation.
Does the roadway have to be wider to accommodate these sloping cables?
It's either wider or you have the S curve or some combination of the two. Yes, it is, and that's true. In fact, any of the options where the cables go out from a center point above the bridge, you have, they, of course, form a triangle of space and you have to fit into that triangle a rectangle that is your clearance envelope. So therefore, the cables do stand out a certain distance away from the deck in order to accommodate that.
Do you have an elevation that shows that in the next slide? No.
There's a plan view and here's some...
There you go. You sort of see that on the left image where the cable can actually interrupt some of the deck use.
And the S curve actually threads you through that geometry in a way that actually avoids that clearance problem. So it has a functional as well as an urban design utility.
But as Rick said, the designers have made it quite clear that there will be a rectangle of some dimension. I'm not sure exactly what it is. I think it's 12 feet wide and eight feet tall, something like that.
That's correct, that's a minimum clearance.
And all of the bridge designs would have a clear 12-foot-wide, eight-foot-tall rectangle extending all the way across the bridge. And in some cases, it'll be necessary to widen the actual bridge deck maybe out to 14 or 15 feet so that when the cables come down, they don't interrupt that rectangle.
And when we say widen the deck, we don't necessarily mean widen the deck that you walk on. We may mean just that you extend, you know, the members under the deck out farther, you know, to where the cables attach.
I attended the workshop and one of the concerns I had about this particular design is if you look in the lower right image, someone approaching the bridge, you can't, you don't have an unobstructed view across the entire bridge. Now, I assume you can adjust the curvature of the bridge so that it's not this dramatic. But one of the things that's important for me is to be able to see as far as possible to make sure I know who's on the other side of the bridge if it's nighttime and I'm going across it. So that certainly was one of my concerns about this particular design is interrupting visibility across the length of the bridge.
And we have, in fact, revised the geometry of the deck a little bit since the meeting. And if we have time to show the animation, I don't know how we're doing on time.
We do.
You want to see the animation, right?
Why don't we get through the PowerPoint and look at the movies?
Can I just ask a quick question? What's the full length of the bridge from when you start to experience it to the end? I mean...
Oh, yes, it's about 300 feet, the main span.
300 feet.
If you include the ramps, though, of course, it's a lot more. Really, we think of it as being a kind of an experience that really starts at Bay Street and then ends at Horton or up at the north end of the Greenway, actually, as a kind of a design experience.
I wanted to mention that the single arch can be done with a straight...
It can be, yes. It can be a straight deck also, and we're looking at that also as an option, too.
So that the deck would be split by the arch itself as you hit the arch on either side?
Well, if you look, it's basically, if you look at the picture on the left there, you can vary the curvature of that curve and you can actually make it, you know, basically straight if you, at the extreme of, you know, kind of pulling on it. At that point, you will have a wider underdeck for the cables to go out farther, you know, to provide that clearance envelope at the ends of the bridge. So it'll look a little different than this picture, but it still has that kind of dynamic feel of going through the bridge at an angle. But it wouldn't have as, have as quite an effect of that skew being, you know, converted into a graceful curve.
Right, right.
So these are all things that we'll have to look at in balance as we go into detailed design if we pursue this option.
But under the straight alignment, say we're on the west side here, the deck would be on the north side of the arch, on the west side, and it would be on the south side of the arch?
That is correct, yes, yes.
Or you could reverse it.
Right.
You could reverse it, in fact, yes. This is the last option, this is a cable-stayed bridge. This is a bit of a hybrid. The cable-stayed bridge is the most difficult one to figure out how to lift the span into place over the railroad tracks in one operation. And what you're looking at here is a kind of a hybrid. We start out with the underframe of the deck, which is just the steel frame of the deck, which is, of course, a lot less weight than the deck is when you have the concrete poured for the walking surface. And we lift that into place with a very shallow truss, which actually later on becomes the, supports the handrails of the bridge. And that's lifted into place by the crane. And then as soon as that's in place, then the cables can be attached to the tower. And as the cables are stressed, then that puts, you know, more support into the bridge and then the concrete deck can then be poured on top of the steel underframe. And this is a way that we can actually build a cable-stayed bridge, you know, over a railroad track and still place it in a less than one-day window. What happens then is that frame that you see there, that is the handrails, we can take out some of the steel at that point, probably the diagonals we would have in that truss, leaving just the uprights, you know, to support the railing at that point. And there's a view of it. You can imagine that railing having diagonals as well initially when the deck was first lifted into place, like a railroad truss.
And you said this one in terms of cost is probably, although they all come within budget or under budget, this one is probably at the higher end of the range.
It probably is, yes.
And what about long-term maintenance? I mean, this tower is 120 feet tall. Aren't there some maintenance challenges to this one that may not be the case in some of the other options?
I would think they're all about the same. The maintenance, of course, for all of them requires painting periodically because they're steel structures, you know, with a concrete deck. We look at concrete, but concrete is, of course, a lot more expensive and also is, it's not really possible to, in this case, to place the concrete bridge in one operation over the railroad tracks. So steel does require painting and that's the main maintenance issue. And one thing they're looking at right now at detail level is how to paint effectively without having to tie up traffic down below on the railroad tracks.
Oh.
And we have several scenarios that we've actually now come up with that will enable us to do that and we're kind of evaluating their pros and cons. But that is the main maintenance issue would be periodic repainting of the bridge.
And actually, all the bridges would require painting. The single arch and the butterfly truss and the basket handle truss, those truss, those are arches, those arches would all have to be painted. And they're not as high up in the air quite as this tower is, but they're pretty high up there. So it's not clear that painting this tower would be that much more difficult than painting any of the others. What the Public Works Director has expressed concern about is painting the underside immediately over the railroad tracks. Because by the time you get all set up to paint, then a train comes along and you have to move and then you have to start all over again. So it's an issue that has to be worked out.
I was kind of surprised, actually, to hear the Public Works Director express more concern about painting the bottom of this bridge than painting any of the towers.
Okay.
But that's where the trains are. I think that was his reason.
Right.
But, you know, one of the options we're looking at, just to let you know, is that you can have the panels in the deck, can of course be removable. You can lift them up and that's one, that's one option we're looking at. Lift the panel up and you can place the panel back down or you reach through the hole to paint, you know, from above.
Would it necessarily have to be painted or could we look at some type of steel or material that would oxidize and perhaps have a nice patina to it?
Yeah, you're talking about products like Corten steel or weathering steel. And that is a possibility. One of the issues with Corten steel, though, in this environment, which is a marine environment, is that Corten doesn't really do that well in a high-salt, humid environment. And it's not as bad here as in some parts of the world. Like, you can't use Corten at all in Hawaii for that reason. It literally rots in 10 years. But here, it's not nearly that bad, but it would not be a really wise choice with the salt content. And other options, of course, like stainless steel would be, of course, way too expensive, you know, obviously. But, and another option is to build a soffit under the bridge, enclose the bridge with the material. And that's another possibility, too. That also raises the issue, though, of inspection access. So there's a lot of different possibilities and they all have their pitfalls. The tower on this bridge, which of course can be a variety of shapes, it could be, we're showing here an A-frame tower in this view here. Other options would be a single mast that would have, you know, guiding cables going in different directions, you know, to support it more like a tent pole. And if you've ever been to Denver and seen the bridge they have across the tracks in downtown Denver called the Millennium Bridge, it's a single mast that supports a railway bridge like that. So these are various possibilities that we could look into if we were to go with this option. But the A-frame is a very, very basic and very economical type of structure for the This is an early study that we're doing of the park. And what it's showing, the thing I want to point out here is that the ramp from the bridge, which is the lighter colored sort of S curve in the lower right, it comes down to a point where you saw before in the PowerPoint, we had the switchback. At that point, you're going down to the north and down to the south on an earth form in the park, kind of a slope. So it's like a hill. You're coming off from the north along the Greenway, you'd gradually climb up to a level about, say, six feet or so above current grade and you'd start back down again toward Horton. At the summit of that hill is where that ramp connects to the bridge, to the bridge ramp. And that is the current, you know, the current idea that we're pursuing.
So this park design shows the mounding to reduce the length of the...
Yes, it does, yes.
So where would the ramp extend to if we didn't have the mounding?
It would either, it would either come back on itself, back almost to where the bridge starts at the lower right. And if you wanted to have a second ramp to the north to accommodate people coming from the Greenway, it would go up to about where the Greenway narrows there, just past the parking garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so can you point out where the elevator would be if one is constructed on the east side?
Yes, I'll try to do the pointer here.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, there it is.
It'd be right about there.
Which you've shown it.
It does the elevator.
On the other side, on the north side?
Well, we have a, we have an internal debate. It could go either place. The point is it would actually be at the east abutment. And one of the things we have to look at now, which we hadn't looked at at this point when we did this drawing a couple of weeks ago, is that we really want to ensure that we have a logical path to the south as well. And that'll influence ultimately where we place the elevator. But it'll be in that area, either where it's shown on the map or where I have the pointer. And in either case, it would work just fine.
And to get to it, then, you would cross the small existing, is that an existing bridge over Temescal Creek? That would be a new bridge over...
It'd be a new bridge.
And then you'd have to come back to the south across that plaza area?
Mm-hmm.
To the footings of the bridge? So if it were on the south side of the tower, the idea is to create, construct a new, a second pedestrian bridge over Temescal Creek to get to Sherwin-Williams?
There would be that possibility or in the event that the city, you know, were to acquire the access to the site from the railroad corridor, there's that existing railway spur bridge, and that might be a possibility in the future for a connection into Sherwin-Williams site. But if not, we would build another bridge across the channel.
Okay.
So again, we have to look at all of that in the next phase and begin to fine-tune that whole landscape around the base of the bridge. And that would determine exactly where the elevator would be if you had an elevator and where you'd have other access, the plaza and other ramps and other smaller bridges. And landscaping also, of course.
And so can you describe this enhancement area along the edge of the habitat enhancement shown in the southern edge there where I assume there would be a future connection?
Yes, the idea there, and this is, again, just something that we're exploring as a possibility, is to open up or actually breach the side of the line channel there to allow part of the estuary, you know, the backflow from the estuary to actually go into that area and form a wetland, which would be very similar to what would have been there originally. And that, of course, is also the location of the original channel of Temescal Creek, a very small area there. So the idea is to create a wetland environment there. And, yes, it's just one idea that we're exploring.
Is that, have you talked to the flood control district about that option yet? And whether they're going to allow a breach in the...
No, we haven't.
Channel, okay.
That's why I say it's just an idea that we're exploring.
Okay. Was that it for the park design presentation? Or was, oh, here we go.
Here's a larger view, larger picture of the east abutment area. And again, this is very conceptual and this is changing as we speak, as we get into more detailed design, but it gives you a flavor of what we're looking at.
And as part of that enhancement area, already an open channel, I see you've segmented off where it continues onto the Novartis property. It looks like, as I recall, there's an opening there already.
Yeah, so you're seeing there, I'll use the, yeah, I'll use the pointer again here. This reach right here is what's there now. That is the actual concrete line channel right here. And the idea of having the little wetland area was actually over in this area here.
Right.
And that dashed line indicates the remains of the old Temescal channel, which...
But doesn't it resurface a little bit?
A little bit of that old channel is open to the sky currently.
That's up at Horton, right?
No, right here, right here.
Well, at Horton as well. But you can see a little box you've called out there near the pointer. I think that segment there, if you look back at the aerial, is actually open.
Right there. Oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, that's right.
And the standards, it looks like you got some Moscone Center light standard proposed here. What happened to the Greenway standard?
This can all be...
I'm looking at the light standard.
This can all be revisited and will be.
Okay.
Yeah.
A work in progress.
A work in progress, indeed.
We do have two different concepts that kind of collide here. One is that the goal, one goal is to have a continuous experience that's sort of nature, Alone people celebration continued from the Bay Street Center across the bridge and into the park. And the other is to extend the idea of the Greenway from the north to the south. So it's going to be an interesting challenge deciding how we resolve that.
And we're taking on, in fact, doing both, not, at this point, not doing either or.
I'd like to make sure the commission has an opportunity to see the animations of the five bridges.
I think we're ready now to do that.
Hopefully, we have time for that.
Sure. So I'm going to start by showing you a longer one that takes you on a path through most of the project. And it happens to be an animation of the basket handle option. But then I'm going to show you some shorter clips of the other options as well.
No, butterfly.
Oh, baskets. Sorry. Here we are, climbing, climbing the stairs from Alone Way up to the garage bridge. We're showing the existing bridge in this case, in this animation.
Stopping.
And we're stopping to look both ways for traffic.
Look both ways, good.
And it being clear, we carry on.
Okay.
Now, we're climbing up to the, to the bridge level. And to the, to your right would be the beginning of the bicycle ramp. Now, we're going across.
And that's a standard approach to the screening that you've shown here, 10 feet high, I think, is a requirement?
That's correct, yeah. And we're showing a sort of a generic, you know, mesh in this case, just to be fair that we have, we have something there that's part of the visual context. We will, of course, spend a lot of time, you know, actually designing what that actually is, obviously. Now, we're coming down the bicycle ramp on the Horton Street side. And I'll stop here for a moment. We're showing this model, since we haven't designed the park yet. The darker areas, which appear to be ramps in this animation, are really the, would be the mounding in the park, actually. But this model doesn't model the park yet. We're showing that as a ramp in the model.
So all the rails would be gone in the shadow area?
Correct, they'd be gone. They wouldn't be shown here.
Good.
That's correct. Rails would end right here where the white turns gray, actually.
Much better.
And we're just going to kind of pan around the site here to give a different point of view. That's what you'd see looking down from the Greenway approach in that case. This can get a bit seasick here, so hang on here. Unfortunately, my laptop doesn't have quite the computing power of my computer at my office, so it's just a little choppy and I apologize. Now, we're still on, of course, the Horton Street side. We're going to back out here and have a look at the bridge from Horton Street, I think, is the next view here. Here we go. So that's what you'd see looking in from Horton Street. It would be a similar view as you have from Alone with a narrow corridor leading into a flight of stairs leading up to the bridge.
You'll actually be able to see it from Horton?
Indeed.
Oh, good.
Because you're on access. You look right in.
Great.
The east abutment is on access with that greenbelt.
Yeah, and you can see Alonee in the background there. That's great.
Now we're huffing and puffing up the stairs here. That guy is still there. He's there another way across, too.
Trouble.
Did you say this mesh work could be open?
Yes, there's a, it could be a whole number of things. It has to be, there are certain requirements about the size of the openings.
Four inches, I thought.
That's correct, yeah. But it can be a welded wire grid. It can be, of course, you know, ugly chain link if you want to do that. It can be bars. There's a whole lot of options. And, you know, you can see one example of that on the 40th Street Bridge, where you have a higher ornamental railing where you're crossing the railroad tracks. And that's, I think, that one's actually a combination of steel bars and a wire grid. It's definitely a very important visual element in the bridge. This is something we have to really deal with in detail design to minimize the visual impact.
And this shows the existing garage bridge with the...
It does, yes.
Complicated truss.
It does. Now we're looking down the bicycle ramp, and you'll see there, in a moment here, I'll stop it again, the landing that's showing up here on the right as we get close to it, that's where you turn in to the garage and go toward the elevators.
Good.
But you did say that this segment here is also ADA compliant.
It is. It has to be. There's not, we don't have an option. Seat belts are optional, we're going around this curve here. Now we're looking back down toward Alonee. This is the path the bicycles follow down to the street.
And technically, this would be accessible to bikes and pedestrians. It wouldn't be segregated lanes.
Indeed, yeah.
With a deck that's 10 feet wide through this area? Or what's the width of the deck here?
We're showing 10 feet right now.
Okay.
I think the bridge deck is to be 12, and the ramps are to be 10.
So this is where we end up on Alonee, right here, and that's the, you look back down toward Shellmount. So I'll show you at least one more. I can take you, I'll show you the single arch. If you have more time, I can show some more, but you can tell me when we have enough time.
I think we should do all of them.
Great.
Maybe we don't have to stop the others, though.
Does everyone want to see them all?
This is fun.
Okay.
I think we should see them all, and the other ones are shorter. They don't do the whole approach.
So no stopping for breath this time.
And this is a replaced bridge rather than the original, the existing bridge?
Correct.
Did you notice that, Art, how open that was?
One thing you may not have noticed since we didn't stop is that the tower, cable stay tower, is not visible from Alonee Way. So you don't see it until you actually get on the bridge.
Oh, because it's so far east, huh?
So all you would see would be just the last cable that's coming down to connect to the deck. We'll just go back across the bridge here. I won't take you down the bike ramp again, because that's common to all of the options. I mean, we don't hear either. Just getting an overview here.
That's very dramatic.
Yeah.
Basically, all of that.
Could be.
See, from this view here, you can see that the tower isn't visible until you get up to the bridge.
You'll see the cables, right in this area. Of course, one thing you can do with cables is you can actually light them as well at night by shining a spotlight up the cable. And that can be done on the arch bridges as well, so they can become a part of the visual image at night.
Wow.
This would be a very delicate visual option from this direction. Now, from the Horton Street side, of course, it's going to be more dramatic than the others, because it's going to be a very tall tower right in your, on your line of sight.
Saving the single arch for last.
Again, shown with the replacement garage bridge.
Makes quite a difference, doesn't it?
Much more open.
It is, and you can, this is what you'd see as you come up to that landing before you cross.
Would it be possible to have an open rail, or would it have to be a solid rail across that garage bridge?
It can be similar to what we have on the main bridge, and of course, not as high, because it doesn't have the 10-foot limit in that case. But there would need to be a railing with the four-inch void requirement.
Cable rail with mesh.
Mm-hmm. Now, we're going to go down the stairs, not down the ramp on this one also. If you like this toy rig, you can download it from Google, by the way. It's called SketchUp.
Of course you can.
I might add, for free, actually, too. It's a wonderful design tool that we use.
Heading up to another one.
Uh-oh. Got lost there.
Okay, we're coming back here. We're coming back to land here. Here we go. There we go. And that's the end, the view from looking in from Horton Street, that option.
With the butterfly arch, the arch could be inward or outward projecting?
Well, the inward one, of course, is the basket handle. That's the other option. And so it's really, it's a very similar design structurally, just that the arch leans out instead of leans in.
Okay.
Don't miss your coming around the corner here.
I've seen it all before. I went to the workshop.
See if there's anybody sketchy on the other side.
I'm going to stop it here in a moment. I'm going to stop it right here. This is as far as we've gotten with our adjustment of the geometry. And we are opening up now a line of sight. It does go all the way through between both bridge ends, but there still are some pockets. And we put that guy in there just to show that. There's a pocket there where that guy is standing, where you wouldn't be able to see him until you got farther into the bridge if you were looking back there. So that's something we're looking at, and how to open it up even more if we need to.
Yeah, one of the challenges is when you have screening and you look at it at an angle, it becomes a solid mash.
That's correct.
I doubt you even have the perforation in this that you've shown here, so.
He looks perfectly safe.
You never know.
Doesn't even have any eyes.
I've got right thigh him.
Then we can't see that shifty-eyed look. So be aware.
So the elevator would either be stationed off to the right here or a little to the left?
Either be right over here in that inside corner, or over here on the side.
Okay. And I assume you're fully aware of the challenges with the existing elevator crossing at the Amtrak station and are addressing those in terms of a potential elevator design?
Yeah, and it's, that's a problem that, those kinds of problems with elevators are universal. But they can also be addressed by design to a pretty high degree. The real issue is transparency. If you have an open elevator shaft with glass, or you have a, what's called, an observation elevator, where you have the cab running up and down a column, and this, the cab has glass, in either case, you can see in. And that makes most of the difference, actually, in terms of vandalism. And a good example is, if you want to see one and even verify that, VTA down in San Jose, at their Hamilton Station on the line out to Los Gatos, the VTA line, the light rail line, they have a glass elevator there at Hamilton. And I think it's been now in service for probably two or three years, and it's, it looks great still. And it's my understanding that they've had no problems because people can see in, so. So there you have it.
Great. Anyone have any other questions before we hear from the public?
No questions. I'll just add that we have the boards actually out in the breezeway here as well, if you want to look at them later on.
Great.
I have one question. At the existing bridge, or I guess even at the new bridge, where there's going to be this experience or landing on the west side, how wide is that and how deep is that off of the bridge? Off of the existing bridge, I guess. Would we be adding a landing there? Just as you get to the top of the stair before you cross the street? It looked like it.
Which makes sense.
We have a very small one there, because you need something. You can't just leave the stairs and it'd be on the roadway. There has to be a little sort of a space there just to pause and look both ways.
It just seems like that's a good spot also, you know, stop and sit, even though, you know, we got one car per minute, but you can look west from there as well.
So your suggestion is make that landing a little bit larger?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Welcome.
We'll probably have some more questions for you as we get into discussion. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to this item or provide input?
Do you want me to sit down, Commissioner?
Yeah. Thanks.
Your legs must be tired, ain't ya?
Come on up, introduce yourself. There's a sign and sheet off to the right. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes.
My name is Colbert Dare. What you have been looking at is a functional design versus what I think should be a visionary design. A functional, functionary, functional design is basically what you saw is just to get across the railway. If you had a visionary design, it will get you across the railway plus reflect Emeryville's vision. In this functional bridge, because it's only going across the railway, it's only one benefit for Emeryville. You walk up, you walk across, you walk down, you're finished. That's it. It's basically 800 feet of corridors. I'm wondering if this is considered exciting and vibrant, and I'm wondering if Emeryville will be known as having the longest corridor in the city core. A visionary design is multifunction. You have more than one benefit. A visionary design would take into an urban design, would take into account an urban design. The urban design will recognize that Emeryville's center core is blight. It's one of the city's biggest blight area. And by that, the design will already be different. If you just take, just take one little example, if you're heading eastward on the bridge and you flare it into the corner of that north building, what you now created was a public deck. This public deck, I'm only giving you one design out of others, but this public deck, you can add benches, you can add a obelisk, I mean, not obelisk, a kiosk, you can have the Ulan history there for the public, and you can also have outdoor art classes and anything, and many other things. So that's one benefit. Second benefit is it's environmentally friendly. When you connect the bridge into that corner, you create a core. It's almost like in a building, high-rise building, you have the center core. You're doing the same thing here. You can share the stairs with Bay Street, you can share the elevators, and also, you don't have that long ramp, that 300-foot ramp that is placed on the south parking lot. So there's, that's simply, there's four benefits right there versus one. I hope that you ask that another design be considered, a visionary design that reflects Emeryville's vision.
Thanks. And Colbert, if you want to sign in over off to the right, there's a sign in there for your name and address. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the commission on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to any other questions and then discussion and some recommendation from the commission. Go ahead, Patty.
Yeah, I have one question concerning, you'd mentioned with the, what was it, the single...
Arch.
No, it was a cable stay bridge, I think, that presented an opportunity for lighting.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Yeah, well, I wanted to know if any of the other design options could incorporate lighting, because I would like to see public art in terms of a lighting project across the bridge. And I know that can be a challenge when you've got engineering issues to deal with and maintenance issues for the city to deal with, but I've seen a number of examples where there have been bridges that have been lit up, and they've incorporated that as a public art piece, and I wanted to know if all of these options could present that opportunity.
Yes, the answer is absolutely yes. All of them, in fact, have, except for the truss, actually used cables as the suspension elements, whether it's the arch or the cable-stayed bridge. And they all have the option of having the cable spotlight from below. And you can also spotlight the arches themselves as well, so you can have that option available for all the bridges, actually.
So could you do something like with LEDs? And there's, I'm thinking of one example of a bridge in Seattle, which is my hometown, the one off of Elliott Way that links from one side across the railroad tracks.
This is the engine bridge. Yes, I know it very well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? So, where do we start? Oh, did you have a question?
Well, I'll just go through mine. It's quick.
Go ahead.
First of all, do you know the Sundial Bridge in Reading?
I do, yes.
That's a beautiful bridge, and if any of you haven't seen it, it's obviously one of the most magnificent bridges, so materials-wise, translucence on the deck somehow would certainly, but I'm sure we all share that material want. I like the meander of the bridge because Temescal Creek is below, so that sort of celebrates that.
The single arch?
The single arch. I like the single arch. I like the meander of the bridge regardless of the arch. I think the single arch still looks good. So that's my favorite. And I think treatments, you know, responding to Colbert who left, I mean, we can, obviously, there can be a lot of treatments to this, that lighting or experiences, but I don't believe that stopping on the bridge anywhere is really worth it. There's spots on the existing bridge and down below, and on the other side, certainly there's an enormous park that's going to be there, that that's really the experience. And I guess that's it. I mean, I was going to ask about the rails, but you, the screen is 10 feet?
High.
10 feet high?
Correct, yes.
And so we can do, you could do a lot of treatments, right?
Well, to be precise, there actually are two options. One option is to have a vertical screen that's 10 feet high. The other option is to have a lower screen, but it has to hook over your head, though.
Ah, yeah.
And that's, we feel that's even more confining, although it is a little bit lower.
You can burn the metal, the steel, and put designs in it, and so there's a lot of treatment ideas there.
There are a lot of options, actually, we can look at.
And put your LED lights in it.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Otherwise, I think this has been a great exercise, so appreciate all the time that went into it.
Well, thank you very much.
Go ahead, Art.
Well, I, of the various options, I like the single arch bridge meandering. I'm concerned about the railing, though. I think it needs to be a lot more open than what you show. It looks almost tunnel-like, the way it's depicted, but if you could have open rails, I think it would really improve the experience walking across the bridge. And the other thing I feel, and I know it's probably out of the question, but I think if there's any way we can eliminate that auto bridge across Alonee, I think that would improve the project tremendously. And if it's not a fire problem, I think it's something we really ought to look into.
Save some bucks.
Okay. Well, originally, when we received our packet, I was pretty keen on the butterfly arch, because I thought that option presented the greatest opportunity. because I thought that option presented the greatest opportunity for lighting, but you've convinced me that we can probably do some sort of a lighting component if others are supportive of that. I had asked several people that are bike riders, because I was concerned about the single arch because of the meandering, and I thought there might be line-of-sight issues and safety issues, but in speaking with several people, I feel much more confidence that a meandering deck can be just as safe as a straightaway deck. So at this point, you know, even though I still like the butterfly arch, I also like the single arch, and I also like the cable-stay bridge. I think that has some great opportunities. I think that this bridge presents a great opportunity to do something innovative. Oh, I have to make a preferred choice? No, I don't. I'm open. A lot of it's going to have to do with what's feasible, both from a design and from a cost perspective, because I suspect that all of these are in budget now, but that's because they're in conceptual design. The reality of going into more detailed design, I think, is going to increase the cost significantly. But I think you've done an outstanding job. I'm really excited about the project. And the stairs, I see as an opportunity. We could have our Emeryville steps, you know, that will compete with the Spanish Steps of Rome.
Will they?
We could, we could consider that.
With more lighting, of course, too, there.
More lighting and more design.
Yeah, I, my, I do like the single, the single arch bridge as well. I also like the butterfly because of the openness, and my big concern with the single arch, I like the way that the meander looks, except for those blind spots, and our other above-grade crossings in town don't feel safe for me at night. I walk across them and, you know, look around, and I would not like to have all of our options across the street feel that way to me. I think that if there, if the sightline issues are resolved, that the single arch is nice. And I do like the butterfly one, too, because of the openness. I definitely think we should replace the truss between the two parking garages. And I think that the Birmingham...
You mean with a new, a new bridge, not a, not a tear-down, but a new bridge?
Yeah, to open that up as well visually.
Got it.
I agree.
I think that both of those, both the butterfly and the single arch bridge have a lot of opportunities for embellishment, you know, in a simple way, you know, some elegant embellishment, whether it's lighting or whether it's the patterning in the screen across.
Or both.
Well, I join most everybody else here in liking the single arch meandering bridge design, too. I am very concerned, I bicycle myself almost every day, and down to Berkeley, through Emeryville, and we are a real minority. Most of the people I see on the Bay Trail, on the streets, are pedestrians. And I think this kind of shortcuts pedestrians a little bit, and it's focused mostly on bicycle riders. And that I think it's crucial we have an elevator on the east side. There are a lot of senior citizens in Emeryville, and I think they have to be served. They can't go up this long ramp with a wheelchair. And that, you know, I, well, I think the new auto bridge connecting the two parking structures is nicer than the existing one. If we didn't replace it, we could use that money to put an elevator on the east side. And I just think that's really important because I think this facility is going to be used much more by pedestrians than by bicycle riders.
I agree.
Agreed?
I would just comment that, I don't know if you know, Rick, but I think our engineers have told us that the minimum cost for an elevator is somewhere on two million?
That's about correct, yeah, right.
And the, and the bridge between the garages is about three-quarters of a million, so it's not, not quite, about three-quarters of a million, so it's not quite the same price. It's not, it's not like a trade-off.
And that was done through a, that was, that was done through a kind of a comparables analysis of typical elevators, like the one the BTA has down, the glass elevator at Hamilton, was one example we actually looked at in generating a cost estimate for...
I think this whole thing has come about through pressure from bicycle riders rather than any other single group, and I think other groups have to be considered, too.
So, you know, I'm probably more like Patty. I'm open to a design that is as open as possible and transparent, even more than translucent. I want to make sure that whatever design moves forward addresses and provides the greatest safety and comfort to people using it. I think the cable stay could be very dramatic and help even in a surrounding area, people to realize that there's a bridge there, there's something going on there. It would really be an attractive feature, especially if lit up at night. So I think there's sort of a real dramatic opportunity with the cable stay. And, you know, I could live with the single arch if you resolve the wiggle and the challenge around visibility across the bridge. I prefer getting rid of the trusses, whatever the solution is. I think it's worth investigating one more time whether we can just completely get rid of the auto bridge and negotiate with Madison Marquette. I've asked that before. I think Art has a good point. We need to confirm that, whether that's really a code issue or just a preference issue. There'd be a large savings there, and it would really open up the bridge design. I, the approach of using mounding on the west, east side to reduce the length of the ramp is excellent, and I fully support that. I think the park design has a ways to go. Integrating access, siding the elevator on the east side is going to be really critical so that there aren't hidden areas that become a urinal. And making sure that there's still some functional use in the park itself. The focus has been on ramps and accommodating the bridge footing, and I want to make sure that there's some usable space in the park as well, that, you know, the one gathering area has a bioswale through it and an extra pathway that maybe looks good on the map, but that could all be turf area, places that people could sit during lunchtime. And I think there's some questions that have to be answered with regard to reopening Temiskal Creek and making sure that that's even going to be feasible from a flood control standpoint and addressing the hydrologic and the erosion control issues and invitation to people down into that channel and the hazards around that. And are we talking about fencing that we haven't considered now to, to both protect the habitat but make sure there's not a risk of kids going down there and creating trouble or becoming a homeless center or some other challenges in an urban environment? And I think it's really important to plot all those things out. The current plan doesn't show the access across that restoration area into the Sherwin-Williams area, so that all has to be defined as part of the park-related improvements there.
Right.
You know, I can live with the, the use of the existing elevator on the west side, and if there are funds available and it can be designed so that it doesn't become a problem, I think it makes sense to have at least eventually an elevator on the east side as well, and it can be stationed well and doesn't compromise as much green space as possible in the park. Right now, it's sort of a circuitous access to the base of that elevator with a lot of large plaza, more paving than I'd like to see. So I just like the park, I think the park design is going to take some further consideration, maybe in addition to, or as part of the next step for the bridge review. And I think we need to really carefully look at the details of lighting standards and Diana's point about merging the intersection of the Greenway, which we spent a lot of years looking at standards and what the Greenway is going to be and how to uniform that experience, and some of the enhancement that, you know, is reflected in the Loney treatment. And I think there are ways to do that with, especially with the habitat enhancement and sort of doing an interpretive program around that, rather than changing the lighting standards and the seating standards and everything else that helps, one, identify where the Greenway is. So I don't think we have, it sounds like most support the cable, or the, oops, that was my preference, the single arch. But there's some, there's some, there's some other input there that about alternative designs and making sure that, you know, we've got something that really works.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Diana.
Two commissioners' opinion, oops, we got two commissioners' opinion about whether there should be an elevator on the east or not, but we don't have the others.
I support an elevator on the east side.
I would, too.
I would not.
I would, as long as it was some kind of really transparent thing that does not allow for gathering, hiding, urinating, whatever they do.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you want to take a break for five minutes, since that took as long as it did?
Yes.
So we will reconvene at eight fifteen with the first public hearing item.
Sorry about that. I'll put it on bypass.
Are we ready for the next item?
Oh, arch.
Oh, is he? Okay. We'll hold on till we get our last commissioner here. We'll give him forty-five seconds.
You could make that new elevator into a piece of sculpture in itself.
Yeah, I know.
And lighten up. That's what it means, lots of lighting.
We need about a ten million dollar grant from somebody.
Two million bucks? Better look like Willy Wonka's class elevator. Well-lit and clear.
So I guess what I'll do while we're waiting for Art is just remind everybody that if you were here to attend the Sixty-Fifth Street Lofts and Ocean Avenue Townhouse Project, it has been postponed to a future meeting. So we've completed the study session items, and now we're on to...
We have a hand up over here.
Yes, Charlie.
Maybe I'll just take this opportunity...
Take the floor for a minute. Oh, here comes Art.
Let me just take this opportunity to announce something that I neglected to announce under my director's reports.
Okay, great.
There is also a meeting on the Sherwin-Williams site cleanup feasibility study, and that's coming up on Wednesday, April second, a public meeting on that, and that will be here at City Hall in the Garden Level, Garden Level at seven PM, Wednesday, April second, seven PM.
Thanks, Charlie. So we have a full commission again. First public hearing item is the Archstone Emeryville banners, and Maru, that's your project. What we'll do is we'll hear briefly from staff and then from the applicant, then we'll open up the public hearing. We'll ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes, and you will be timed. Go ahead, Maru.
Good evening, Chair Martin, commissioners, commissioners. This is a permit to legalize three existing banner signs on the Archstone Residential Development. Just as a way of background, this is the portion of residential development which was known as Emory Bay Club and, Club and Apartments. And this is the eastern portion of it, which fronts on Shellmount Street between sixty-fourth and sixty-fifth. So the three banners, the locations are on the slide in front of you. In terms of sizes, they're about thirty feet to twenty-eight feet long and about three to five, five and a half feet broad. To see how they appear on the building itself, these are some of the pictures of all three banners here.
How long have they been up?
They've been up since early this year, January.
Okay.
Without any permission?
That is correct.
They're illegal.
Yeah, so this is a legalization. And staff is recommending approval for the banners for a period of six months, during which the applicant can apply for more appropriate permanent signs. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
And how did staff come up with that recommendation? Was it based on a previous situation that we had?
That is correct. Yes, at the courtyard, just opposite the other side of the railroad tracks, it was some very similar situation. They had put up the banners, and they came in for legalization, and I think at that time, staff recommended for a year, and then the commission decided that six months was more appropriate.
Right, so your attempt is to be consistent with that treatment?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
You say they have had their banners up for three months already?
Since January, yes.
January, February, March?
I'm sorry, yeah, so about three months.
I believe that...
Do they anticipate that their new banners would look about the same size and shape as these temporary banners? Do they have any idea?
I don't, but staff would not approve what they have right now. They're a little bit too big.
They're too big?
For permanent signs.
They are.
For permanent?
For permanent signs, yes.
They're just proposing to leave these existing banners as they are for six months.
Right. I mean, does staff have any kind of schedule on these things? I understand why you put up banners for a new building or allow banners for a new building, but this is like putting huge billboards on buildings permanently. I mean, this building is fifteen years old.
Right, well, one of the reasons I think the banners went up was, like I'd mentioned, the Emory Bay Club and Apartment complex used to be entirely a rental complex, and they were always, I mean, approved for condos, so western portion of them have been sold off, and that's known as Bridgewater today. And this is, and this eastern portion, and this is the rental side, and which is why they wanted...
And it's been rental for fifteen years, so it's not...
I believe it's a new owner, and they're just attempting to market the units.
Is the owner here? Is the applicant here?
Yes, the applicant is here.
Yeah, the applicant's here.
So unless there are any other questions, let's actually let the applicant make a presentation, and then if we have questions for the applicant, we'll do that, and then we'll open the public hearing. Thanks, Maru.
Good evening. My name is Mark Enterback. I own Garnet Sign Studio, and I'm here on behalf of the company, representing our client, Archstone. Thank you very much to the commission for hearing this. Appreciate it, and I appreciate the staff's recommendation. I believe all I can say beyond what you know is that Archstone came in to purchase the development and, you know, refurbished it and really wanted to get their brand name out to the people to let them know that it was really a sign of quality and an upgrade. And I think that's the reason why, while it may be an older property, it is under new management, and I think that Archstone's name really stands for quality and safety and service. That's really all I have to say, and happy to answer any questions that you've got.
And have you been working with staff on coming up with a permanent solution that meets your needs?
Not for these banners. We've worked with staff and have gotten permits on permanent signage at the same property, but not on these banners. We will work with them to find out exactly what is approved and what your, what your decision is, and then go back to our client and advise them of what we can do, as we have with any other permanent signage that we've put up there.
Go ahead, Art.
Is there any reason to believe that you could not get a permanent sign done in three months? I don't think just because we had one six-month allowance, we should follow that precedent. It seems to me that you've been thinking about this some time. Is it possible to do it in three months and have a permanent sign?
I think, knowing the way the city operates, you might actually be in a better position than I am to answer that. We, as soon as we were made aware of this situation, we filed the necessary paperwork and did whatever we can to come here. I believe that when it was first, there's another property behind it that had a banner, and during the recent storms, shortly after these banners were put up, those banners, I think, were damaged and represented, you know, if not a hazard, certainly a, something that wasn't aesthetically pleasing. And we were contacted, or our client was contacted, and then when we came out and met the staff, it was understood and shown that it wasn't Archstone's property, but rather the property behind it. So at that point is when we began the process that has brought us here tonight. So Mr. Hoff, Commissioner Hoff, the answer to your question is, if it can be approved, you know, we can certainly expedite it and do whatever is necessary to please the commission.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I think what Commissioner Hoff was getting at was, how long would it take to design permanent signs?
The design of the permanent signs can certainly, the design, the fabrication and the installation of the permanent signs can certainly happen in ninety days. Is there a format or a guideline that we can use at this time?
Well, I would imagine that the applicant should have been working with staff over this three-month period since the signs were put up without approval. So, you know, my concern is, I believe this is the third time we've had an applicant come before us asking for permission to maintain the signs that were not authorized from the get-go while they, while we wait six months for them to come up with a design for a permanent sign, and I... while they, while we wait six months for them to come up with a design for a permanent sign, and I'm very concerned that this is setting a precedent, and.
Your question?
Oh, my question is, you are saying then you could put together a design in less than three months.
I'm saying that we can design, fabricate, and install in three months.
What I'm asking is the design, so that that could come before the commission, rather than the continuation of a sign now that has not legally been approved by staff.
Let's have Charlie clarify the process and how long it takes.
Well, yes, there is a lead time on commission meetings, as I'm sure you know. Our tip, our normal schedule is that the deadline for applications for a particular meeting is about seven weeks prior to the meeting. And then, you know, it takes staff some time to review it and write the staff report, get the packet out, and so forth. So if something were ready to submit today, it wouldn't be on your agenda until probably May. And assuming that, you know, it'll take them several weeks to put something together, I would say June would probably be the earliest that something could get on the commission agenda.
But if it met the standards, it could be approved administratively, and it wouldn't have to come back to the commission.
Yeah, that's true.
Depending on the size.
That means less than fifty square feet wall sign.
I didn't get the point. When can it be approved administratively?
If it meets the standards.
If it meets. They don't want an exception.
Well, in the zoning ordinance, there are criteria for what signs have to come to the planning commission and what ones can be approved administratively by staff. And of course, we don't have the same constraint of only meeting once a month and having to prepare packets, so we can administratively approve things much more quickly. So, but generally speaking, for wall signs, that limitation is fifty square feet. So as long as it's a sign that's less than fifty square feet on a wall, we can approve that administratively.
What was the date that they came in with this application? Was it eight weeks ago?
I don't know. Probably, about, yeah.
So it was late January?
Yeah.
Two months. So they were only, okay, that's all.
Do you have any idea whether your proposal will meet the minimum standards and you don't need a commission approval?
I believe that the company wishes to get a signage that is larger than fifty square feet overall.
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So what we'll do now is open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? If so, please step up, state your name, and we'll ask that you sign in, and we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and let's bring it back to discussion. I think Art's, and both Art and Patty have a good point about the precedent, and I don't want this personally to continue. And I think Art's suggestion that we have this wrapped up in three months, they've already had several months, they choose, chose to do what they could or couldn't within that period of time. We were able to see this. If they want to do something larger within eight weeks, that gives them a month to do the design and present it to staff. So I would suggest that we limit, change the suggested conditions of approval to allowing the sign up for another three months and have it down in three months. And I would also suggest that after that, when there's something that's up illegal, they take it down, and we stop this process of allowing these free advertising for some period of time, whether it's three months or six months. I think we need to stop this process of allowing these banners to go up on the building without permit.
So if they don't have it done in three months, the old banners have to come down anyway.
As we required at the courtyard, yes.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Except that at the courtyard, we allowed them a six-month extension rather than three months. Go ahead, Charlie.
I would just say that if your policy is going to be that banners such as this are put up illegally, they would not be approved. We still have to allow the applicant, or the applicant the option of applying to the commission for approval. It sounds like what you're basically doing is directing staff that we should recommend denial when it comes to you. We have to allow them to apply to you, so.
Yeah, for a sign that's put up illegally and they are trying to retroactively get permitted?
Yeah, I think we have to allow them the option of applying, don't we?
Right, but you wouldn't have to leave the sign up while they are applying.
Right.
That's true. That's true. We could institute enforcement action, tell them, take it down, and then they can apply for it after it's down.
Right. I mean, do we have any guidelines about putting these so high up on the building? You know, in most cities, you see a rent sign down near the leasing office that's at kind of pedestrian or auto level. And this is set up to see from blocks away, blocks away, and it's like billboards.
I didn't quite, I didn't quite follow your recommend, I'm sorry.
I just think, I don't know what the city standard is, but I think it should be down at the first floor level.
Well, aren't the standards about percentage of the wall space in terms of the, if we were actually going to be legally permitting this, there's a, it doesn't specify where on the wall, but it limits.
Well, I think we're, I think we're mixing up several things.
Yeah, temporary and permanent signage. And this is just to lease the units up, which they're.
But it's an existing building.
Understood, but the market has suggested that they need signage up to rent the units. I mean, that's, I'm surprised Buzz is arguing about this.
For apartments?
Yes, for apartments. But I understand the, I appreciate your comment about getting them lower, but.
The provision that you're referring to about temporary signage is ten percent of exterior wall area exclusive of windows and doors. Any such temporary signs can be up for forty-five days, and those can be approved administratively. So that's what the threshold here is. It's for administrative approval of a temporary sign.
And the reason why they're in front of the commission today is not the size, but the fact that they wanted more than forty-five days. Because the ten percent of that wall would be less than what they have here.
And to Buzz's point about standards with regard to location on that wall space, those are all discretionary, that we make a decision when we see the application.
That's right. Hopefully, in the new zoning ordinance, we'll have better sign criteria.
Is it your suggestion that we give them ninety days to come up with permanent signs, at which time the temporary signs have to come down?
Yeah, I was basing that on your, that's generous.
I would approve, I would second that.
Let me clarify, actually. I think it's up to them whether or not they want to come in for permanent signage. What you're doing is simply limiting this approval to ninety days.
Fine.
And then encouraging them to work with staff to come up with a permanent sign.
No, we're approving the temporary signs for only three months.
Yeah, remember the.
The rest is up to them.
The permanent sign isn't going to say leasing today or apartments available. It's going to say the name of the building, and it might be illuminated and that's about it.
You can slide something in that says units available or full or something like that.
On a building this size, probably not on the main sign. That'll be done down at the pedestrian level. It'll be a wafer board.
Well, I don't think we can predict what they're going to want to propose in the sign. When we had courtyard come back to us, they wanted to leave that sign up permanently.
I know.
Which had a big phone number across the west face of Sixty-Fifth and Overland.
If the commission members for the Avenue Sixty-four, it was a similar situation. They had come with a banner which kind of looked like this. And then they replaced it with a permanent sign which essentially just says their name, or the name of the building, with perhaps a phone number at the bottom.
But that was one sign on the freeway frontage that lasts, how much, how long was that up?
It was up for at least a good many months, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so is there any other discussion? I don't, my, that was a suggestion. I didn't actually make a motion yet.
I just, I agree with staff, but I'm definitely going to be in the minority, yes.
Okay. So do we have a motion? Or Gail, did you want to chime in?
No, I just want to say that they integrated the sign with the building better than the other people have. They're changing, they changed the ownership. They're changing the colors on the building. They asked, they made an application when they found out they needed to, and I'm happy with the three months. I think I'd rather, I'd vote for three months rather than six months.
Can you make a motion to that effect?
Yes.
And I'll second it.
I'll just make one more comment, that I think if even one tenant, I mean, one resident in the neighborhood came in and complained about it, I'd see it the other way. That's just my, but I agree with the three months.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Donaldson and a second by Commissioner Hoff. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores? Yes. Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
No.
Vice Chair Donaldson?
Don't want to give any time.
No.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Five ayes, one no. The application is approved for three months. This decision may be appealed to the city council within fifteen days.
And we hope that you work with staff and get your permanent sign up there and see us if it requires our approval.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
So, the next two items on the agenda, the Amorous Biotechnologies Pilot Plant at thirteen fifty-five fifty-ninth Street, and the Emery Station East, five eight eight five Hollis Street. Those are both, Diana, you're presenting those, and I believe we're actually going to combine them into a single action tonight. So we have a public hearing. We'll hear from Diana, then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll open the public hearing. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes.
Can I have the camera, please? Thank you. The Amorous item is a conditional use permit, design review, and parking variance to convert sixteen thousand square feet of an industrial building on Fifty-Ninth Street to high-tech for bio, for a biofuels pilot plant, and provide parking for this project and the rest of the building in Emery Station East. The owner of both properties, Wareham, is negotiating an owner participation agreement with the redevelopment agency for this property and the Alders property to the south. The redevelopment will occur in three phases. Phase one is this tenant improvement, and phase two is the new building on the Alders property. And phase three, which would occur in ten to fifteen years, is a new building on this, where this building is. Wareham intends to replace the parking lot on Hollis Street with landscaping and widened sidewalks if they can negotiate a parking change in the other tenant's lease. Whether this will occur in phase one or two is still a subject of negotiation with the agency. The Emery Station East item is an amendment to the conditions of approval, reducing the allowable office space to make room for the Amorous parking. That is, right now, they have an approval for a lab building, and they can rent out some for office, which requires more parking than labs. So we would reduce that amount so Amorous could park there. It would also include doing the same thing to provide replacement parking for the Hollis Street lot and possibly parking for other tenants in the building. The plant would include, the pilot plant would occupy four thousand four hundred and sixty square feet, that's the green in the middle, and the rest of the space would be for labs, offices, storage, and equipment. Amorous expects to have ten to fourteen regular employees and occasionally one or two guest workers. Trucks would include UPS deliveries once or twice a day, weekly plant material recovery, delivery, weekly pickup of product, hazardous waste, trash, and recycling. Materials would be carried into the building with hand trucks and through eight-inch hallways. A hazardous materials storage room here would, meeting, building and fire codes would be used to store flammable and toxic liquids, including products, oils, ammonium hydroxide, a catalyst, hydrogen, nitrogen solvents waste, and olefin hydrocarbon precursors. Let's see, process diagram. The plant would include two fermenters. These are the fermenters, each processing three or four batches of fermentation broth per week. Each batch consists of about seventy-five gallons of fermentation broth, wherein genetically modified yeast converts sugars to oil. The complete batches would be about ninety percent water and ten percent oil, they hope. Oil would be separated from the broth, purified, and hydrogenated to make the fuel products. The fermentation process would produce plant oil similar to those found in tree bark and fruit peels. The fermented broth was tested and found not to include regulated toxic hydrocarbons such as benzene or toluene. A condenser on the fermenters would limit emission of evaporated plant oils to about point one-three pound per day. If the condensers went off, that would be about one point two-six. Hydrogenation could emit about zero point two pounds per day. Adding these up for a worst case gives you about a pound and a half per day, which is less than twenty percent of the regulated threshold of ten pounds per day. So they're under the radar for the air district. Amorous would follow National Institute of Health standards for containment of genetically altered microbes. They deactivate the microbes in the completed batches by heating or by changing the pH, and they place filters on the fermenter exhaust lines. Amorous is proposing changes to the southeast and northwest corners of the site. On the southeast corner, where the property includes a small yard, a new door would open to a new ground cover and pavers leading into the greenway, not the concrete patio and horse tail that's shown on the plans in your packet. Staff envisions the papers as, the pavers as a one-foot-square brick red pavers, similar to those that are, lead from the Oliver Lofts units into the greenway, rather than the three-by-six pavers that are shown here. A condition of approval calls for landscape improvements compatible with the adjacent greenway segment to be approved by the planning director. So we'll make sure those changes are reflected in the building permit plans.
And where's the fencing to be removed and replaced?
A fence is, well, there's, the chain link fence that's there now will come down.
Okay.
A fence is proposed on the west side of that little yard between it and the Alders parking lot. In the elevation, it looks like it's here, but it's actually back there. They're not proposing a fence on the existing or future greenway sides.
And it would connect and close to the fence along the west side of the green, that continues along the west side of the greenway?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. So that people couldn't get in there?
Right.
Okay, but there would be no fencing on the east and the south edges then?
So it would look like greenway up to the door.
Okay.
On a hop, mhm.
And so you're suggesting, rather than the three-by-six foot pavers, three-foot by six-foot pavers that you see on the map here connecting to the DG path, that they be one by, one foot by one foot pavers?
Because there's, there are pavers like that to the north on the greenway.
Right now, immediately east of that little area there, isn't that paved along that east edge?
Yes, it is. It's privately owned.
Okay, but it is currently paved?
Yes.
Okay.
I think. On the Hollis Street parking lot, there is one transformer now, and Amorous proposes to add a second transformer and an emergency generator. Project plans show a fence around this equipment, and a condition of approval calls for a green screen or fence-high planting around this. On the roof, existing skylights would be partially covered to reduce temperature fluctuations and improve energy efficiency, and two small skylights would be added. Air conditioners and process condensers would be screened by a seven-to-ten-foot wall, which you'll see in the elevations, to reduce noise at the property line to sixty decibels, sixty DBA as required in the zoning ordinance. At night, from six PM to seven PM, and on weekends, two air conditioners would be turned off and the third operated in economizer mode in order to achieve noise levels of fifty DBA at the nearby live-work and residential buildings. The live-work building is closest, so we're really talking about this line here. A condition of approval calls for this to be in the lease. It also limits weekly half-hour operation of the generator to seven AM to six PM on weekdays. These times came out of the noise ordinance. A new sentence require, that is not in your packet, requires Amorous either to design the facility to operate its fifty DBA at this property line all the time, or to monitor the noise levels at that property line every night and take remedial action if the noise level is exceeded, and report to the planning department monthly and whenever those noise levels have been exceeded. And I just wrote that this afternoon.
Diana, does that, by monitoring, would there be a noise meter that would be installed? How would they monitor it?
We could define that. I haven't defined it yet.
And did you have language?
That would pretty much be the only way you could do that, get a noise meter.
Do you have this in front of you? These are staff's recommended amendments to the conditions.
But I don't see the noise monitoring.
It's at the bottom of the front page.
Right, so it's not.
You haven't captured those changes yet on.
It should be in there.
The last paragraph.
Well, I see the last paragraph discusses.
I don't know. Or Amorous will monitor noise levels.
Oh, it's just not bolded?
Okay.
Okay, thanks Diana.
Now the elevations. Changes to the outside of the building include adding the sound wall on the roof, replacing the east roll-up door with windows, replacing one door and removing another door, and moving the walkway to line up with that door, and adding the door onto the greenway, which is in another elevation. In the future, when the greenway is developed, Amorous would like to put windows in the wall on that greenway. The windows are shown in their plans, but would not be installed at this time, because you can't put windows on private property line. In future, in the future, minor design review would be required for windows in order to coordinate them with the future design of the greenway, which we don't know yet.
So we're not approving these windows when we, if we approve this?
Right, that was kind of the hope. But since we don't know what the greenway is going to be like, it's kind of hard to do that at this point.
But you have some language in the condition of approval tied back to the window and working?
There is some language about the window, and I think I added about the condition, the minor use, um, design review.
In terms of future greenway improvement, I vaguely recall that.
Yes. LSA has prepared an initial study and negative declaration pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, and no significant impacts were identified. Given the standard conditions of approval, no mitigation measures were required. A notice of intent to issue a negative declaration was posted at the site and at the county clerk's office, and no comments were received. In January, this project was listed on the planning commission agenda as exempt from CEQA, but staff rethought that and decided to continue the item and prepare the initial study. Meanwhile, a neighbor wrote a letter objecting to the exemption, and recently, after meeting with Amorous, she has stated that her concerns about the project have been resolved. It probably wasn't exempt, though. She was right about that. On the DS are letters of support from three neighbors and the Chamber of Commerce. Wareham has requested changes to the Amorous resolution and conditions since your packet went out to reflect their intention not to lease the southeast corner yard to Amorous as a patio and picnic area, and a change to the Emery Station East conditions restoring the allowable office space if parking for that property is no longer provided at Emery Station East. And these changes are shown on the page in front of you. That concludes the staff presentation. Jeff Levency of Amorous and Martin Gicklehorn of, of the Architects would like to make a brief presentation. And we also have Jeff Sears of Wareham and Krsinthia Brown of ESA here, in case you have questions for them. So any questions of staff?
I have a question for you. Explain to me how the off-street parking will work. You say that because they're changing Emery Station East from office to laboratory, they're freeing up parking spaces which could be allocated to the, to the pilot project. Is that, is that the concept?
Right. So if, yeah. Allowing less office space in Emery Station East reduces the, the parking need of that building.
So my question is, how do you control it? How do we know they will not go back to office space and then mess up our parking calculation?
Well, hopefully, they would come in for use for, well, generally, we see them, people when they come in for a TI, tenant improvements, when they have new use.
For a building permit.
A building permit.
We'll be aware of it.
We'd say, oh, look, they're putting offices in here. Let's look at their conditions of approval.
So if a new use went in there to replace the laboratory, they would come in for a building permit, and that would be the checkpoint?
Correct.
What's the standard for labs?
Excuse me?
What's the parking standard for labs?
Well, the parking standard for most industrial uses is one space for 1,000. The zoning ordinance standard for R and D is different from that.
Well, I can, actually, in this case, we had a special study done. Is that what you were going to say?
Mhm.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
In this case, Fair and Peers did a rather complex study of the real parking needs of several buildings with similar uses in Emeryville and the surrounding area. And after reading, I actually, my draft staff report had a complex paragraph about this, which Charlie took out. But the, the upshot of all that actually turned out to be about one space per 1,000.
So they're asking to reduce the office space by 35,000 square feet, which would...
Provide 35 parking spaces for the building across the street.
But one space per 1,000 is what it would be if it was a lab, which it is now, right?
The math comes out that if you reduce the spaces by 1,000 square feet, you produce one space per 1,000 for across the street.
It's about two per 1,000 for lab.
So it was more.
And three per 1,000 for office.
Yeah.
So there's a difference of about one space per 1,000.
Difference.
So every 1,000 square feet of office space that you don't let them have, every 1,000 square feet of lab space that you don't allow to be converted to office gains you one parking space.
So staff has done the calculation and confirmed that the reduction in office use in Emery Station East proposed would be adequate to accommodate?
Oh, yes. See, what happened was, the Emery Station East building was proposed as being entirely a lab building. And so we, as Diana said, we had Fair and Peers do a study, and we figured out what the parking requirement would be for a lab building of that size. And it came out to about two per 1,000. But when they built the building, when they designed the building, Wareham opted to provide more than that amount of parking. So they actually have more parking in Emery Station East than they actually need for the lab, if the building were entirely laboratory. So they asked if, if as a condition of approval, you may recall this, when the Emery Station East project was approved, the conditions allow a certain amount of the building to be converted to office in the future because of that excess parking. So all we've done is just shrink the amount of space that could be converted to office in the future to, you know, free up another, I think it's 35 parking spaces.
Sure. Any other questions? Thanks, Diana.
Thanks, Diana.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation? And Diana, while we're getting set up with the presentation, can you find in the conditions of approval where the reference to the windows in the greenway is?
Sure.
That would be useful. I'm looking on page eight right now, under Roman numeral 4A1, and I don't see it, which is where I assumed it would go. So if you can find that for reference, that would be good.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Jeff Levency. And thanks to staff for their efforts on behalf of this project and for your consideration of the project. I will be brief. Diana did an excellent job of giving you an overview of the project. I would like to say a couple of words by way of an Amorous profile about the project and our efforts in terms of community outreach. If there is an interest on your part to get a little more into the architectural aspects, I will call on Martin Gicklehorn to come up. If not, then we'll end with, with the slide on the project's significance. We have other project team members here in the event that there are detailed questions that go into their area of specialization. Amorous is a small, growing green tech business in Emeryville, founded in 2003 by UC Berkeley professor Jay Keisling and four postdoctoral students. It evolved to three paid employees in 2004, and then to its first home in Emeryville, in Emery Station North, in 2005. It has now grown to over 100 employees. We will be moving our office and lab facilities into Emery Station East in May and expect to have about 200 employees by the end of this year. There have been some significant milestones along the way, which you can see on the right-hand side. More recently, Amorous has been selected by Scientific American as Business Leader of the Year in 2008, and we have recently announced a partnership with One World Health and Sanofi Aventis to commercialize our anti-malarial product. But in addition to that, our scientists have been working to modify microbes in the lab to efficiently convert ordinary renewable plant sugars to water insoluble molecules common in natural plant oils. And these also happen to be excellent liquid transportation fuels. The amazing thing is these microbes, microbes actually secrete these molecules as represented by this microscopic picture. The little puddles are actually puddles of fuel. The small particles, rod-shaped particles, are microbes. So this work in biology done by our scientists has made, has actually made possible the concept of producing advanced biofuels from microbes. To make it real, we'd like to create a small-scale, practical process in a facility we call a pilot plant. The function of that is to validate the technology and generate the engineering data for full-scale plant design and commercialization. In other words, making it real. The diagram, Diana did an excellent job of explaining to you. I won't repeat that. I will say, we have an experienced team on the design of this facility, including Gicklehorn Lazarato, the architect, Dome Construction, the general contractor. And we have internal to Amorous experienced staff in this field. Besides myself, David Horano, who will be the pilot plant manager. Rick Campbell is our facilities manager. We have been diligent in design, spending nine months. And by the time we finish our detailed design, we will have 8,000 hours of effort into that design. It is a small-scale facility, the minimum size that would satisfy the function. And of course, you heard about the CEQA study outcome. In terms of community outreach, we've provided a number of documents which are available to the public and to members of the community. We have always communicated an open-door philosophy. Anyone is welcome to visit us. As Diana mentioned, immediate neighbors have been contacted. We have several letters of support. No concerns surfaced. We did resolve the concerns of one other Emeryville resident, as you have seen in an email statement. We have worked with city staff and have had all of you in to, to visit Amorous. Significance of the project, this is very important to Amorous business success in terms of timely commercialization of our fuels, technology. It's a unique opportunity for us because we can locate the pilot plant very close to our office-lab facility. We have access to outstanding talent in the, in the Bay Area. We have significant at-risk investment in, already in terms of the design and equipment for the facility. We believe the project is also beneficial to the Emeryville community. It's a desirable, Amorous is a desirable, high-profile, green tech business. We support other Emeryville businesses. About 10% of our employees call Emeryville home. We give back to the community as a company, and we are adding to the local tax base. So with that, I want to thank you for your consideration of our project and ask you if you would like have, like to have Martin come forward for further looks at the architectural aspects, or if you judge that not to be necessary.
I think we should have a, at least a summary
Okay.
of what's proposed with the elevations. And actually, I have a question for you, just for the public record. We're, we're talking about GMOs and microbes here in the release. Can you just, in a sentence or two, summarize the risk, if there is any, and how that's addressed?
Yeah, according to the established standards, the host microbe that we're using is a common yeast, Saccharomyces cerevisiae, known as baker's or brewer's yeast. And this is generally regarded as safe. Any foreign DNA that are introduced into that yeast come from sources which are also safe. In other words, the, the introduced DNA itself is not hazardous. So by the standards of the governing bodies, government, governing bodies, the product microbe is considered to be safe.
And then there's also treatment in terms of filtration and e-treatment.
Right, yeah. We, we follow very well-established containment procedures and, and using designs widely practiced in the biotech industry to minimize the release of any viable microbes to the environment.
The estimates that there, any release that occurs is well under standard?
Yeah, the standard is so-called six-log reduction. In other words, killing 99.9999%.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Martin Gicklehorn. I'm the architect for the project. And the slide that you have before you is the, the site plan. And the project building is at the corner of 59th and Hollis Street. I think you've already seen that. This is the existing elevation on the 59th Street side. As you can see, the landscaping is fairly mature, and we don't really intend to change that very much. This is the Hollis Street elevation. And as you've heard, that there are down-the-road plans by Wareham to landscape this. We will add a little bit of equipment to the existing electrical equipment that's already there and then screen it all from site. That's the intent. This is a site plan of the area, and the bright yellow area is actually the, the 16, approximately 16,000 square feet that Amorous will occupy. The remaining portion of the building is occupied by other tenants, so it's a multi-tenant facility. Amorous will have approximately 45% of the building. And quite a bit of discussion has already taken place about this little piece of landscaping on the southeast corner, so I don't think I'll cover that again. And we've also mentioned that although we would like to have windows, and the client would like to have windows out into the potential future greenway, we know that that's not resolved at this point. And so the project has not been designed to be in any way dependent upon having those.
So there's a storage building and some meters and other things at the northeast corner? Within the gray area, but is that part of the site as well?
No, it actually isn't. It's kind of an interesting property line there. It, it takes a, the property line does not make a straight run to 59th Street. It turns, so that, that, there is about a two-foot piece between, the gap that does belong to the Wareham property.
So those structures have nothing to do with this site?
Well, other than they're not particularly good-looking. And we, 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 I think we would prefer to remove them, but we were told that we couldn't because they're not on our property.
Okay.
So.
Thanks for confirming that. Only with regard to the parking variance?
Existing tenants. I believe Zoma is in the larger piece, and a server reconditioning company is in the long, narrow piece. Correct. The, the yellow portion.
And the parking variance that we're considering would also accommodate future expansion and conversion in the orange, pink area as well? Do you understand that, Art?
I understand that. Okay.
These are the elevations, and you've seen them here, though, that we've, we've drawn some circles around so you can see the areas that are actually the portions of the elevation of the parts of the building that Amorous will occupy. And it, it makes clear that Amorous is one tenant in a larger building here. And we point out that the changes that are being made. We're taking out one roll-up door and putting a conference room behind it, so we have an opportunity to put a nice, large window in there. And we are screening the mechanical and electrical equipment that's some existing and some to be added along Hollis Street.
What type of material are you envisioning for this screening?
Well, we call it a decorative metal fence. It hasn't completely been designed yet. We were talking about perforated metal, but we, we want something that we can grow something on. So vines will grow on.
Up on the roof?
But I, I guess my...
No, 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 not on the roof. This is...
No, this, this, for the, the, the screening, you, you've got it identified screening and wall in, in the elevation. So for that, that, that barrier that you're proposing to enclose all the mechanical equipment, what type of material?
You're talking about on the roof, right?
On the roof?
Right. Oh, on the roof. The roof is, has to be an absolute solid barrier, 1.4 pounds per square foot. The, the, the technical requirements of that barrier have been defined by our acoustical engineer in order to meet your acoustical criteria. And right now, it's a corrugated metal.
Okay, that's what it looked like to me.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what it is.
Thank you.
I, I thought you were talking about the Hollis.
No, sorry. I, no, I was talking about the mechanical barrier.
But it's set back a considerable... But it's set back a considerable distance from the street, so-
Quite a bit.
Especially from the south side of 59th, it's probably not even going to be visible.
But it'll be visible from the rim.
And from the north side, right.
You said that the Hollis Street may be landscaped in the future?
That's right. There's another project that Wareham is working on right now that will-
But this, this not, this future projects isn't going to change this building. In other words, why aren't we getting landscaping on the Hollis Street side of this building as part of this project?
Well, I can answer for Amorous, it's not part of their project area, for one. It's a multi-tenant facility. It would certainly displace all the parking that is there and along Hollis Street. And there are other projects that are moving in the direction of making that happen. That's all.
Are you saying landscaping along Hollis Street would reduce the amount of parking available?
Correct.
Oh, I see. That's the problem.
Right. Your project basically would be screening, on Hollis frontage, would be screening the generator, for the emergency generator along Hollis.
And a new transformer for a new service from PG&E.
Okay.
Really, that's it.
Yeah.
And our goal is to minimize the size of that enclosure.
Good. And how often would that operate? That's only during an emergency? Diana mentioned daytime limitations on the operation. I mean, if an emergency happens-
It's only if power were to go out and to serve code-required loads in the building. We have, we have a very small H occupancy in the building that is required to have emergency generation to maintain the exhaust for that space.
Right.
Actually, we have some refrigerators and freezers, so that material isn't lost. It's, and life safety. Those are the three items that are on the emergency power.
Right, but Diana mentioned some restrictions on when that generation could actually operate, which surprised me.
When you have an emergency generator, you need to run it for a half an hour every week just to keep it alive.
Oh, okay, so just a testing.
So we're limiting the hours of that.
Okay, I now understand.
Per month.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's just exercising it to make sure it works. So here's the floor plan, and Diana has already shown you this, but I'll go into a little bit more detail. The front end of the facility is on 59th Street, and the main entrance faces a very small landscape area there, but it is nonetheless a landscape area. Then we have an office area with a conference room, and we have the sort of non-technical sides of the facility facing that area. Then the pilot process area, which is the lighter in green color, which is approximately 4,500 square feet, so approximately one-quarter of the facility is actually used for the process work. Then we have some support labs. We have a few storage spaces. There's a loading dock and some shipping-receiving off of that loading dock, also facing 59th Street. And we have some mechanical and electrical rooms in the corner of the facility, in the far-back corner. And that's pretty much how the space is laid out. It's a very simple, simple plan, and it's really all I have to say about it.
You don't have a plan that shows the landscaping and the little patio area in the back there?
No, we don't. Just the one that you've seen before.
Okay.
The, in working with Diana, the, you know, the requirement put forth is that we had to design it to be compatible with the existing greenway, and that's the intent. And at that point in time, we had, we originally had it fenced between, a fence between the greenway and that, and that's been removed, and the intent is to integrate that-
I understand.
Into the greenway.
Yeah, I actually have some concerns about the design that I'll raise later. Go ahead, Art.
It's not a question for him, it's a question for you. I realize Amorous is not responsible for Hollis Street, but Wareham is, and is it unreasonable for us to request Wareham to do landscaping on Hollis Street in order to get this project approved?
Well, it would remove parking and make the building unusable.
Which is what we're doing anyway, with the approval of the variance.
No, no, this is parking for the other part of the building, which is still-
Right, but we're also simultaneously approving a larger variance that would accommodate the change in land use and allow all the parking to be accommodated in the Emery Station East parking structure.
Even the tenants from the other part of the building?
Yes.
This parking on Hollis Street is essential to the, meeting the parking requirements?
Not if we approve the variance that allows all the parking to be served in the garage at Emery Station East.
Maybe I could embellish on this a little bit. As Diana said, the overall, the bigger picture for this bigger site is a three-phase plan. Phase one is what you see here tonight. Phase two is a new building on the property immediately to the south. Phase three would be demolition of this building and construction of a new building there as well, so then the whole site would be covered with new buildings. Wareham is proposing to landscape that area possibly in phase two, or maybe later in phase one, but they weren't proposing to do it immediately. However, it's going to make that parking have to go away, and so rather than have them have to come back to you for a second variance to deal with the other half of the parking, it seemed more expeditious to just throw all the parking into one variance right now. So, that's why you have a variance before you for all the parking in this building, but they're not necessarily planning to get rid of that parking in front and replace it with landscaping immediately. It would be sometime in the, hopefully not too distant, future.
I'm confused. Are you saying the variance would permit them to remove the parking on Hollis Street?
Yes, it would.
So we could require them to landscape it, then, if we wanted to?
Well, the reason why they requested that variance is so they will have the ability to landscape it in the future when they're ready to.
But how, when will phase two be, for example? How long are we going to have to put up with this?
It may be before phase two.
Before what?
It may be before phase two.
So Art's question is, can we require them, as part of this approval, to landscape the frontage along Hollis?
I suppose you could. I would just say that they didn't have to apply for a variance for that parking at this time. We kind of talked them into it because we told them it would be more efficient. I don't know if you want to hear from Wareham, maybe they can shed some light on this.
Someone from Wareham can explain what they're proposing and when?
Good evening. Jeff Sears with Wareham Development. Charlie's characterized it correctly. Many people don't like that big slanted concrete surface. Diana had it correct. Other tenants have rights to park there now. We don't have the unilateral right to force them to move across the street. We're willing to try to negotiate that if you allow that parking to work across the street, so this is step one. Our intent is to bring in a plan to you in a study session in the very near future for the new building that will include a plan for this area. So whether that's going to be in the next 30 days or 60 days, it's that sort of timeframe, and you'll be able to see the whole plan.
And that would replace the Hollis Street parking?
Yeah, that plan will show that we're prospectively able to get the tenants to agree to accept parking across the street so that we can redo the whole front. So some of that, very conceptual stuff we've shared with the redevelopment agency, we've been talking to them about that.
You're talking like three to six months, not three to six years?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
But just to be clear, the, I think the landscaping of that area along Hollis Street isn't necessarily linked to building, the phase-two building, it's more linked to negotiating those leases that give them the rights to that parking, isn't it?
Well, none of it can happen if we can't get them to agree to accept parking across the street.
Right.
They have the right to say no. We don't, we think it's likely, that's why we're going to these, we're trying to get you to say, "All you have to do is get them to agree, and then we'll go talk to them." So this was the first step, and again, I, our plan is to bring it in here in the next 60 days, the new building plus this piece.
Was it possible that they, if they don't have to go across the street, that you could provide in parking in the building just to the south of where they are, which would be more convenient for them?
It's that site on which we plan a new building that we're going to bring in here in the next 30 or 60 days, so there won't, that'll have parking that serves that building, so maybe that's a possibility with that. It's not a lot of spaces that they have, I mean, one of the things you're doing is providing for, this has sort of non-compliant grandfathered parking. So one of the things you're doing is meeting the current code parking with these actions if you pass them tonight, so that the, all the uses are covered for a larger, for a larger parking supply.
But parking in a new building to the south wouldn't be available for, you know, a couple of years probably, whereas the parking across the street is available right now.
If they approve it.
If they agree to go there.
Any other questions for me? Okay.
No, thanks, Jeff. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? This is your opportunity to speak to the commission, and we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes, and then, if you could, please, Bob, sign in off to the right there.
Yep, sure will, Jim. Thank you. Bob Cantor, I'm president and CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. Thanks. We're here tonight in support, I believe you all received a message from us earlier, and I was careful to copy Charlie, and I want to thank him. I believe he also produced hard copies of it. We kept it brief. It referenced some of the technical aspects that you've seen. I noticed in one of the slides, the Sequa issues have been, I think, mostly addressed about the volume of traffic, the safety issues, the air emissions, all of that. Two other issues that aren't really planning issues per se, are more policy issues, but something we think you'd like to consider about this project. Number one, and this was referenced briefly by a previous speaker, Amorous is a new company, as you know, it's an exciting company, it's been cited, it's the kind of company we kind of like to attract here in town, it's that green kind of, green technology jobs. And they're also becoming now a company that's embracing the communities, reaching out, there'll be an article on our next issue of our paper about their sending volunteers to the schools. And secondly, as many of you know, the city recently in December became a partner in this Green Quarter partnership with Oakland Berkeley, Richmond UC, and the Lawrence Livermore Lab, Lawrence Berkeley Lab, excuse me, that was highlighted here, and there's Mayor Nora Davis signing on. And, you know, this is really emblematic of the kind of businesses we're trying to attract here in town, and really, a real, not more than symbolic, moving from the old, the old Emeryville, the old industrial to the new Emeryville. We highlighted this in a editorial, a guest editorial that was published in the East Bay Business Times about three weeks ago, that referenced the benefits of these kinds of projects, and we specifically mentioned Amorous in here. I have copies of this, it's on our website, too, if you want to look at it. But, and we print it out here, if you want copies, on the green papers you see. But these are the kind of projects we want to, we want to approve here in town. I understand there's some issues regarding the layouts, but this is, if we, if we're really going to be part of this Green Quarter partnership and not just a name, but really fulfill our role, this is the kind of business you want to approve. Thanks, I conclude my remarks. Thank you.
If you can sign in, that would be great. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And any other questions before we go to discussion and recommendation? Diana, can you show that landscape treatment up for the southeast corner? I just want to make my greenway point. I talked to staff about it, actually met with Amorous and appreciated all the information they provided. I think the mitigated NEG deck is very thorough and addresses most of the concerns I had.
Just a point of clarification, it's a NEG deck, not a mitigated NEG deck.
Oh, thank you, Charlie.
No mitigation monitoring program.
What was that?
No mitigation monitoring program.
That makes it easier. While Diana's pulling that up, I'm going to go back to the suggested language she had about the noise monitoring, speaking of monitoring, and I'm wondering whether the applicant has thought through what that may mean, given the current language, which is, I get an implication that this is long-term monitoring that has no limitations, that it would be monthly for the life of the project, and I'm just wondering whether the applicant has thought that through, how it would be accomplished. I agree that there's a significant concern about making sure we're not affecting especially nighttime noise levels and weekend noise levels, but I'm wondering if there's another way to define how that can be accomplished, rather than requiring the applicant to do monthly testing, which is my impression of this, the current language here. Have you thought through that condition, and do you have concerns about it, or is that something you can easily accomplish?
We've spent a lot of effort on the noise issue, and our consultant, Charles Salters, advised us that our design will meet that 50 dBA limit 24 hours a day. So that's our current direction. We hadn't thought through the other scenario of, you know, being at a higher noise level during the day and then dropping it down at night, and in that case, how we would monitor and report. Our focus has been on really operating at the lower noise level 24 hours.
Oh, that's great.
But it's not an issue.
So how was your suggestion to actually confirm that you're achieving that standard at the property line, short of staff suggestion, which is to go out and have somebody monitor it physically every month?
Well, when people apply for building permits, the building division does an analysis of what the noise levels would be. We have information from the manufacturers of the equipment and the building plan checkers' analysis of the screen and Salters' analysis, so we can tell when people are building a building what's going to happen.
Whether it's supposed to meet the standard. But the draft language you're suggesting actually reads that Amorous shall monitor noise levels at that line nightly and report the measured noise levels to the planning department monthly.
Yeah, the proposed condition is an either-or, either they build it so that it is down to that level 24 hours a day, or they do that other thing. So if they're down to 20, if that level, we should be all right, we shouldn't have to do the monitoring.
So if staff signs off on that at the time when the design comes in and the engineering drawings, that would be, that would be, I would be much more happy with that. I think monitoring it is just, it's not going to work.
And then, if someone's impression is that they exceed 60 dBA, this is keeping me up at night, then there would be a complaint-driven investigation into what that level actually is to confirm that it's operating under the accepted standard?
Well, and also, if it was operating at higher than 50 dBA, and they weren't doing
the monitoring, then they'd be in violation of this condition.
Right, and would have to attenuate it. Okay.
Right.
So that, that's acceptable to the applicant? Okay, that changed? Diana, did, oh, here we go. My point here, we pushed for years to maximize green planting along the greenway, and what's proposed in this faint diagram here, and I understand there's been some discussion modification with staff, what's proposed and shown in this is these little pavers connecting the greenway to the, what previously was going to, those are three-by-six-foot concrete blocks. Charlie, what are you doing to my point here? And you can see they're within a few inches of the tree trunks that we got planted. It just, Charlie, you're making me sick here.
Sorry.
So, you read the actual language in the conditions of approval, as we learned with great challenge in the greenway, that access is, if it's there, is going to require ADA accessibility. That's one of the locations where we need to meet ADA, and I don't see this system or one-by-one-foot standard meeting ADA access requirements. You've got pavement, existing pavement on the right edge of the patio. If we're taking the fence down, why do we need to do anything here? If there's a fire, somebody can run through the bushes or walk off the property onto the existing pavement until that area gets improved as part of the future greenway segment. I see no reason to add this much concrete, which by ADA standard probably will end up being a DG path, a solid DG path to provide access there, right next to tree trunks, it doesn't make sense. So I'd like to get this entire thing off the map, leave it as is, and for access, they can take a step to the east from the patio and step on the existing pavement until that whole greenway gets redesigned. That's my suggestion. I see no logic in disrupting the irrigation, putting pavement right next to tree trunks of trees we're trying to grow there.
Do these pav-
Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, my underst-
I realize it's private property-
Right. My understanding is that-
Somebody can step onto the greenway if they want to go around the private property and into the planting area. and into the planting area. Is this an ADA accessibility issue?
Well, I'm not sure it's an ADA issue.
I think we're turning it into one.
I think, I think a secondary means of egress for emergency exit doesn't have to be ADA accessible. If you think about a multi-story building that has one elevator lobby with a staircase in it, and then at the opposite end of the building, it has a staircase as an emergency exit, but not an elevator, that second exit is not ADA accessible. I don't think the second exit has to be ADA accessible. But we can't allow, as part of the exiting plan, to include private property as part of that exiting plan.
Let's not have an exiting plan. My concern on page eight of the conditions under...
Well, this is, this is a required second exit. That's my understanding.
Which is the exit from the building itself.
Yes, but does not have to be ADA accessible. And that's why we are allowing them to exit onto the Greenway, because that's public property.
Okay. The path that I'm concerned about, literally and figuratively, is on page eight of the conditions of approval under 4A1, "Street and Greenway Improvements," which identifies where we have to have accessibility to City of Emeryville standards and the American, Americans with Disabilities Act and implementing regulations of the California Accessibility Regulations. We worked long and hard to come up with alternative access solutions. And I know what's going to happen in this location. And it's going to be a solid path, and it's going to be either compacted DG or pavement right next to the tree trunks through an area that we pushed hard to get green. It doesn't make sense. I'd like it taken out.
So, you'd like part of? You'd like part of this condition on page eight taken out?
Yes.
This is a standard condition and we usually use it for our sidewalk improvements. So, what we could do is separate out this exit from the sidewalk improvements.
I think the, you have to read this. What, what this standard condition means is that you comply with these regulations to the extent that they're applicable. So, if it says in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the Americans with Disabilities Act doesn't apply in that particular circumstance, then you're in compliance with it if, you know, if it doesn't meet it, because it doesn't apply. See what I'm saying?
I'm basing, basing my concern out of direct experience with the Greenway and what we struggled with long and hard when it got to public works and they reviewed these standards and tried to come up with options that are less intrusive. And reading through this, it specifically references this pathway, this placement of pavers from the southeast corner of the site to the paved or decomposed granite portion of the Greenway in conformance with the City of Emeryville standards and the Americans with Disability Act's regulations. I know what's going to happen when it goes to public works, and Maurice has to read this, and they try to make it fit.
So, why don't we make the, take the Greenway and the placement of pavers from the southeast corner of the site to the paved or decomposed granite portion of the Greenway out of this condition, so we can still apply it to the sidewalk change?
Great. If we take out that reference, great. If there's a concern when it comes to the fire access and meeting that code, we will hear about that when it gets to public works. I just don't literally want to pave the way for a solid path through an area that's green right now. We worked hard to get green. And it makes no sense when you got pavement six inches to the east of, of the area that everybody's going to use anyway.
So, we'll make the title of that paragraph, "Street Improvements."
Great. Because you have another reference to the actual Greenway improvements that, that Gail mentioned on page 13, which captures the other concern about windows opening onto the Greenway.
Well, that's a little different. If we want to require them to do something here, and we take this out, we won't have it. But maybe we don't want to require them to do something here.
I don't want to require them to do that. No, I'm talking about, on page 13, condition number nine with regard to the east wall and the windows. And I asked you to find the language in the condition of approval with regard to that.
Jim, are these pavers eventually going to be part of the Greenway?
That's what's proposed in this design. Staff saying, instead of three feet by six feet, each of these are shown as...
But this whole area is part, going to be eventually planned as a...
It already is. It's all planted. It's there. The trees are there. It's planted.
The, the part that's at the top of this drawing is not part of the Greenway. That's part of the Amorous property.
I understand that. Where the pavers are is part of the Greenway.
That's the existing Greenway, yes.
But there are no pavers there. They're just trees. Trees and bushes.
Okay.
So, my suggestion is to remove the reference to this connection on condition 4A1. So, the applicant doesn't have to do it. We don't impact the trees and add more pavement. And I think the reference to the windows is adequate. I don't know if you looked at it Frank?
Are you thinking about page 13 when you say windows?
Page 13, number, item A9, the east wall.
Yeah.
So, that makes sense to me. And it sounds like the noise issue has been resolved to the applicant's satisfaction. So, unless there's any other points, we need a motion. I will approve.
I second.
Chair, Chair Martin, we have several distinct resolutions before you.
Great, if you could review them, what we're capturing in this encompassing motion, that would be great.
Like separately on each one. Okay. So, the first resolution, which is resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville, adopting a negative declaration for the Amorous Biotechnologies Pilot Plant Project.
I so moved. Are we good, you want to have these as separate motions?
Yes, yes. I'd like a vote on each of the separate...
I second.
So, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call on everyone, I guess.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Vice Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Six ayes, the motion is approved.
And lastly, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville approving a conditional use permit and design review for the Amorous Biotechnologies Pilot Plant at 1355 59th Street and a parking variance for all uses in the building with the conditional, with the changes to the conditions of approval as discussed.
Presented by staff with regard to picnic and other reference and is discussed tonight.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
And that includes removing that path language in the secondary?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, there's a edit in staff's text here where the reference to the path has to be removed as well. Thanks for catching that Gail.
Oh. Did you get that?
So, we have a motion and a second?
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Vice Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Six ayes, the motion is approved.
And lastly, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville approving an amendment to the conditional use permit and design review for Emery Station East at 5885 Hollis Street.
I so moved.
Come on Frank.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Bookends.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Vice Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Congratulations. It's an exciting project.
Yeah.
And hopefully we'll see some nationwide benefit at some point in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the tour.
And we'll see landscaping along Hollis sooner than later. Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that did have the green screen and the conditions of approval.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner comments is the final item on the agenda here.
I, I have some...
Go ahead Art.
I, I know we cannot take a policy matters because it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to raise a question, and maybe about a future agenda or study sessions. There had been some constructive criticism of the Planning Commission that maybe we spend too mu... Huh? Like maybe we spend too much time on design and not enough time on substance, I think the way one council member put it. And they were refer...
Council member?
Yes.
Okay.
Design isn't substantive, huh?
And my, and, and what the reference was, is why doesn't the Planning Commission do things like insist upon more three-bedroom units? Why don't we do something about the Nelson Nygaard study and insist upon unbundled parking, transit passes, car sharing, maybe reduce parking requirements? So, my question is, number one, what is the city policy? And what is our role and how much authority do we have to do these things without specific direction from the City Council? Because I, I may not agree with all of them, but some of them have good ideas. And I feel like I'm in Never Never Land. I mean, people want us to do things, I'm not sure we're supposed to be doing it. Or maybe there's things we should be able to do. So, I'd like a discussion on those matters.
I'm curious before staffing answers that question hopefully, did you ask council when they were going to set policy on those items?
I thought I'd leave that to staff.
Okay. That's what I said before. We're not policymakers. We're the commission. We're supposed to enforce the general plan, the zoning code, and look at design review. That's our responsibility, not to set policy. Go ahead.
Well, to the extent that what you want to do is within the framework of the existing zoning ordinance, there's no reason why you can't require certain things as conditions of approval or prevail upon developers to do things a different way. Three-bedroom units is an example. There's nothing in the zoning code that speaks to how many or how few two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom units a project must have or can have. And in previous discussions, when, when the issue of three-bedroom units has come before the council and, and there was talk about setting a, regulating it, saying you must have a certain number of, of different sized units, the council hasn't wanted to do that. They have deferred to the Planning Commission and said the Planning Commission can apply pressure on the developers and, you know, insist on more three-bedroom units on a case-by-case basis as part of their project review. Similarly, with regard to parking, as long as the number of spaces that are required by the zoning ordinance are provided, you could put in conditions, I suppose, about bundling or unbundling of it. If, if the number required by the zoning ordinance was not provided, then there would have to be a variance. You could have as a condition on the variance, something about bundling or unbundling. You can also include transportation demand management, TDM programs in your conditions.
We could do that.
You can, for larger projects. Typically, that's to mitigate traffic impacts. But, you know, you have a fair amount of discretion as to what you can require, as long as it is not inconsistent with the zoning ordinance and other laws.
Two thoughts coming to it. Number one, does the rest of the commission feel that we have enough direction to know those things to apply? And, and in the case of three-bedroom units, there's, there's a monetary consideration. There's a city willing to subsidize, like they do low-rent housing for the creation of three-bedroom units. So, I, I would think that we would need some direction on both of those issues before we start imposing them on developers.
Well, let me just add that in the ongoing general plan update, zoning ordinance update work, the concept of bonus heights and bonus density and bonus FAR has been raised. And that, for example, today, if people want to get to go, in a 40-foot district, if they want to go to 55 feet, which is a conditionally permitted height, there's no specific criteria other than the general use permit findings that you have to make. So, most people just assume they're going to get the extra height. But, in the new scheme, you would have to do certain things. You would have to earn points in order to get that additional height. And it could be more three-bedroom units, it could be more unbundled parking, it could be a lot of things like that. So, we're, we're going to try to work that into the new zoning scheme, and that will be a direction from the council. It'll be embodied in the new zoning ordinance, but we're not there yet.
Did you get your question answered Art?
Well, I, I, I think the good news is that Charlie feels that we have the authority to require some of these things on a project-by-project basis if we feel strongly enough about it.
We have general plan policies around family-friendly housing as too.
So, I, I'm not sure I'm in favor of, of many of the Nelson Nygaard proposals, but I am in favor of some. So, I guess we can bring them up on individual projects as we see fit.
And I would say, you know, I think the City Council looks to you to provide some leadership in some of these areas. I don't think you necessarily have to get specific direction from them in all of these different policy areas. You know, they respect your opinion. And actually, unless the project gets appealed, your, your decision stands.
So, we could take an outrageous position and they could let them react?
All three-bedroom apartments.
You might not get reappointed, but...
The city council could overrule us and...
Certainly they can.
Yes, Commissioner Cardoza makes a good point, that certainly if the council disagrees with an action that the commission has taken, that they have the ability to appeal to themselves your decisions.
An applicant.
Does the council have the right to appeal if nobody else appeals?
Yes.
They have.
Oh, they can call it forward?
They did that on the Doyle-Hollis Park project.
Yeah, remember?
Oh, I see.
So, so there is some control there.
No, you were.
And an opportunity for the council to, to express its opinion.
You know, I think it's useful to continue this dialogue in an annual meeting with the council as well, where we get to talk about these broader issues outside the general plan or something specific.
And we do it to some extent. I mean, Housing Advisory Committee that Buzz and I are on with Ruth and Nora, we go at length about family-friendly housing and...
I think it's just useful, we've done it before, and I, I don't know how long it's been since we had sort of a council-commission roundtable.
Last Saturday?
Last, I was going to say that.
That was specific to the general item where we couldn't point out, you know, what, what are, what standards do you want us to apply? I know we've done it before while I've served on the commission, and I think it's really useful, and I think it's something that probably would be useful on an annual basis, to have that discussion where we could raise whatever we wanted and get direction from the majority of the council.
Retreat.
It's a good point, Art. Any other comments from commissioners?
I have a question, and I can't remember the name of the building, but it's, the building along Hollis Street, south of Stanford. There are large, all of the windows are, are boarded up with large sheets of plywood. When I drove, when I drove by today, I noticed this and I'm going, what is going on here?
That's the, the one at 53rd and Hollis?
Yes.
I noticed that too. I, I don't know.
What is going on? It looks terrible.
I don't know, but I'll find out.
Thank you.
Does it face out on Hollis?
Yes.
Are you talking about the Chiron? I mean, the Novartis building?
It used to be Novartis.
It used to be Novartis, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure.
It looks like they're glazing over the windows probably. No, I noticed that too. Go ahead Frank.
I was just going to ask if someone could look into the landscaping on 46th Street for View 46. I don't know where the Oakland-Emeryville line is and what our jurisdiction or even what the conditions of approval were, because that was so long ago. But they just put a bunch of DG in and there's maybe six or seven plants. I can't imagine Jim Martin would have ever approved that. So, if we could look at that.
Probably over the line in Oakland.
It doesn't look like it is, because my window looks on it.